Good afternoon. We will call this a regular board meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023 to order at 3:30 PM. We are starting a little earlier than usual as we have a full executive session agenda. With that, roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus here. Director Daniels.
Director Daniels will be joining us a little late.
Director Jorgensen.
Here.
Director Loma.
Director Loma is expected to join us at any time.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So, we have five board members in attendance right now, and I expect both Director Loma and Director Daniels to join us at some point in time during executive session. With that moment of silence, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tricia Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing item F2, Budget Transfers, Appropriations, and FTE Approvals, as there are no Budget Transfers, Appropriations, and FTE Approvals.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion has been adopted. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 2464024B. Particular matter, employee benefits in charter schools, boards of cooperative education services, which are Bosie Schools. Negotiations per CRS 2464024E. Particular matter, superintendent's contract, interest-based bargaining with Colorado Springs Education Association regarding master agreement in charter school, boards of cooperative educational services, schools, and personnel, personnel, excuse me, per CRS 2464024F. Particular matter, superintendent's contract.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Thank you. Okay, we, good evening to all of you. We are reconvening in public session, and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. And it's always exciting to see several of our students and staff in the boardroom. And I know we are going to be recognizing some schools later in the agenda, looking forward to that. And I want to quickly take a minute and update the community on the board retreat we had last week. It was a good productive quality time for the board to collectively engage in much-needed professional development, especially on ways to effectively and respectfully communicate and efficiently conduct the business of the board at board meetings. And one of the things that we discussed at that retreat was a recommitment to the board norms that we adopted last year. And some of those norms apply to all of us, the board members and the people in the audience alike, and others are just for the board. And the norms are printed in the front of the agenda that you might have picked up as you walked in for your reference and reminder. I'm not going to read them out loud, but those are the expectations for professional decorum in the boardroom and will be followed. Thank you. And for those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted by removing items F2, Budget Transfers, Appropriations, and FTE Approvals, as there are no Budget Transfers, Appropriations, and FTE Approval. Okay, may I have the students from Holmes Middle School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. I don't have your name, but that was excellent. Thank you. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have some awards and recognition. I'm going to turn it over to you Superintendent Gaul.
Dr. Malpakum, the School Board of Education, and to all the community, it is so exciting to be able to celebrate the excellence in our students. We have a couple of students that have been doing some extraordinary things in both state and jazz band. So what we're going to do is I'm going to ask all those students to come forward, and then Melissa's going to read those citations, and we have a couple of awards. So you know who you are, so come on forward so we can celebrate you. And your orchestra and as ensemble instructors should come forward, too.
Okay, it's the Dordi students, Daniel Kaminsky and Charlie DeGrove, under the direction of Mr. Angelo Sapienza.
These students were selected to participate in the Colorado All-State Jazz Band and played with other students from across the state in a performance at the Colorado Music Educators Association Conference at the end of January. These students are in the top echelon of the high school instrumental jazz scene. After an arduous audition process, they were selected to represent the top tier in their discipline. The hard work put into this process culminated with a public concert given at the Colorado Music Educators Association Conference at the Broadmoor on January 28th. Allstate Jazz is sponsored by the Colorado Bandmasters Association.
We also have a student from Coronado, under the direction of Kim Kincaid, and the student is Josh Bryley.
Give a round of applause. So we have a flutist and a bassist, so, okay. Next time, bring your instruments so we can... Thanks, everybody. Nope. Okay, so for all the parents out there who know how much time and practice it takes for kids to be able to make those levels of accomplishment at the, at the high school level, we are also excited tonight to be able to celebrate our two Pathway Elementary Schools, both Columbia and Martinez, because you don't get to where those kids got if you don't have the chance to start that early. And so although we do have very strong music and arts programs in many of our schools, we're very excited about the Pathways programs for our arts integration schools. And so if we can have the leaders for Columbia and Martinez, and if you have any of your students here to come forward, come on in, here we come. Look at this. Go ahead, you want to read that? Go ahead.
Martinez Elementary and Columbia Elementary have been accepted into the A-plus Schools Arts Program and will join a network of 79 schools nationwide. A-plus Schools of North Carolina, established as a public-private partnership in 1995, is a whole-school transformation model that helps develop a creative culture in which state standards are taught through multi-discipline collaboration with the arts. A signature program of the North Carolina Arts Council, A-plus Schools is a national leader in providing professional development that supports comprehensive arts education and other creative practices. Research shows that students proficiency and overall school performance increases following the implementation of A-plus practice and philosophy. A-plus Schools also report improved attendance, fewer disciplinary problems, stronger teacher satisfaction, and higher levels of community and parental involvement.
So while Superintendent Gaul is handing you some of his commemorative coins, congratulations to both Martinez and Columbia. Yeah, this is the next step in the process. We look forward to both of you opening as a Pathway School in August. Best wishes for the both of you. I know that you and your staff are working really hard getting all the professional development that is necessary. This is, this is exactly what we were talking about in our AMP Academic Master Plan, and this is going to provide opportunity for our students, students to pursue arts and performing arts skills in your schools. We look for, send us invites to come and visit your school events.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on from awards and recognitions, it's the school spotlight, and today we have Holmes Middle School, and I will hand it over to you for the introduction and presentation.
All right, Principal Carr, the floor is yours, our small middle school on the top of the hill. So, so excited that you and the team are here tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Gaul, Dr. Malpakum, Board of Directors. We really appreciate this opportunity as well. Do we have the slideshow? While they're pulling up the slideshow, I just, I'll start, we wanted to structure this by trying to tell a story, a little bit of a story of where Holmes, where we've been, where we're at now, and where we would like to go to. And some of that is laid out, but I'll be adding to that as we go through the slideshow. Before we begin, I do want to recognize members of our school community, specifically from our school accountability committee, and parents that have been incredibly supportive over the course of the last two years as part of this story and, and process that we've gone through, and have also put in some extra effort to make sure that we have this opportunity to be here tonight. So thank you, all of you from our school accountability committee and the support that you've given over the last couple of years.
Yeah, could they stand up?
Yes, please.
Who are the parents that are involved in that?
Back corner.
Thank you.
Am I able to move it on? There we go, all right. Where we were, so what we're looking at is a comparison, and coming into last school year, we were in a situation, obviously coming out of the pandemic and pandemic learning, where we underestimated to a significant degree, and I think the "we" is a collective "we," not just school-based personnel, not just me as, as the school leader, our teaching staff and building leadership, but the collective "we." System-wide, I think we significantly underestimated the impact that pandemic learning was going to have on our students. So we came into last school year, and we had a plan, the plan did not hit the mark. Coming into this school year, then, we're, we're talking about, okay, we have a baseline, we have an opportunity to consider last school year a baseline. And that baseline is being compared to the 2019 School Performance Framework. Previous Holmes Middle School's performance was in performance plan ratings, and then the 2022, we went down to an improvement plan. Now, there's a lot that can be pieced out, we just wanted to say, this is a baseline, and we can consider it a baseline if we make improvements. And that, that's a lot of the work, then, that was coming in to focus on this school year. If we don't make those improvements, and we don't have a sense of urgency, then it's not a baseline, it becomes a trend, and we wanted to avoid that trend. And the trend getting back to what you see up there with the 2019 School Performance Framework, and then the Five Essentials results. What we did then to start to make the changes associated with what we're seeing right now are addressing what we've referred to as trust. And we did some data analysis, and we put it into this triangulation analysis. Thank you to Dr. Kaliki for kind of walking our schools through, and our schools specifically through how to do some of that triangulation. What you see here is some Five Essentials results, teacher-principal trust, teacher-student trust, decline from the 2021 survey to the, to the 2022. We have on the left there, the Panorama Survey results. Panorama Survey had a decline in teacher and student relationships. And then on the bottom, we did a series of focus groups with students to kind of add to that quantifiable information in a, at a different level. And some of the student identified challenges, teachers expect, expect respect, but don't respect students. That was in the previous school year. And some suggestions that they came, we took all of this information into play to address trust. So now we're looking at our transformation. And what's really important to piece out with this is the work that we've done was very first and foremost needing to have behavior improvements. For our school, for our school community, for our accountability work, it was not a debate about chicken before the egg. Behavior improvements needed to come, and then we felt confident that we were going to be in a better footing with our academic achievement and growth. So specifically, and where a lot of this work from our school accountability committee wanted us to present and highlight is around the behavior improvements. And the first item there called Goal Academy, we're using two ESAR-supported, grant-funded-supported positions to run what we're referring to as Goal Academy. And Goal Academy has been really instrumental to, to help us with the turnaround that we're seeing right now. Goal Academy has been an intensive intervention, behavior reset for students. It is strength-based goal-setting. It helps students understand the impact of how choices and behaviors are manifesting in the classrooms, impacting their classmates and impacting their teachers. And then it, it has been really instrumental to help prevent further dysregulation of, of students that have had to participate in Goal Academy. Previous anecdotal examples would be students that can't get it together, are having behavior challenges, they would be on pathways where we're talking about multiple out-of-school suspensions and possibly expulsion, and that's not good for anybody. So we've implemented a program with those two grant-funded positions to be able to help curb that trend, and it's, it has been successful. We also came into the school year needing to be very consistent, and the, the next two bulleted points under behavior improvement are around positive behavior intervention supports and our consistent approach with that. And then the third is around our trauma-responsive practices. I had the opportunity a few, couple months back to meet with Director Nelson and kind of highlight the work around trauma-responsive practices, and I want to pass along some of that information as well. And then finally, we've implemented as part of Goal Academy and with those behavior interventionist positions, a much more restorative approach when students are facing situations where they have to have school-based consequences. And again, helping to get that level of understanding how choices impact many, many others than just, just themselves or their immediate situation. Then on the academic side, what we've set forward are outlined in those bulleted points. Best first instruction, we are implementing short-cycle assessment and intervention processes. We have increased, and I would say primarily due to our ability to reduce behavioral situations, time for administrators to be in the classroom has greatly increased, and so the number of observation and coaching meetings that we've been able to have has doubled, if not tripled, by the end of the school year. And then we've set very rigorous and ambitious measures of student learning outcomes as school and specifically our math and English teachers. So where are we, then? There's a lot to celebrate, and part of what we're, we're working on right now is we are celebrating, but, and we need to keep the momentum going to make sure that these changes continue. In 2021, you can see the, the behavioral results, 338 incidents. We needed to, without question, have a sense of urgency to reduce that, and the goal was to cut that in half, and we've, we've met and just slightly exceeded that, that mid-year goal, so we're very happy with that. Right alongside with the overall reduction are what we've dubbed high-intensity incidents, incidents that would take up a significant amount of time and manpower from teaching and administrative staff to work through, but would also have a significant impact on a victim in these kinds of things. And the reduction there is much more than half, obviously. Then on the academic side, again, we set mid-year targets. We wanted to make sure that we had a sense of urgency to reach those, and now we're at a stage where we can celebrate that, and we can continue the momentum forward. Our mid-year target for ELA growth was a 50, and coming up from a 46, that would be a reasonable growth target. We've crushed it, 59, very happy about that. Math momentum, very similar story, we had a 41 on last year's CMAS. We wanted to try and improve that, ratchet that up just a little bit, and we've overshot that mark as well. So momentum, transformation is, is coming. And then finally, we're in the middle of the Five Essentials survey right now, so we didn't have, by the time I pulled the, the slides together, we didn't have student results or teacher results in that, but we did have the parent responses, and we hit a 51% compared to previous school year of 26% of our parents responding to that Five Essentials survey. And that parent response rate is, is super valuable, is really important for our accountability committee, our building leadership teams to help make decisions, and we're very excited to be able to have as reliable information as possible. And now I want to call up Natalie and Eva, who were our student council representatives, who did the Pledge of Allegiance for us, and they're going to talk about our assembly that we had celebrating a lot of these successes and walk you through a bit of an activity.
Hello, I am Eva, I am the student council president, and this is Natalie, one of our student council representatives. Hello. Oh. Hi, I'm Eva, I am the student council president, and this is Natalie, one of our representatives. And we just recently put on the assembly to highlight academic success and with sports and contribution. Yeah. And she's going to talk to you guys about some of the parts that the students enjoyed and the highlights of it.
Hi, so I'm Natalie, like she said, we, I helped a lot make the assembly happen, but we had some ideas that would help raise student morale and like interactions with students across grade levels. So we had our mascot, we have two of them, so two hawks were dancing around, and we had games, and everyone who was in like a club or a sport or like had good attendance or like star scores, they got to be recognized for their good job. And everyone loved how they got to participate in games, and the sixth graders who got to sit right next to the herkeys, they really loved having them run back and forth, giving them high fives. It was just really fun and got to show everyone how good of a job that they did and recognize it, so that they didn't feel like it was for nothing, because it really mattered, and everyone had a really fun time.
So one of the best parts of the assembly that a lot of the students enjoyed were the games, so we wanted to challenge you guys, we needed four representatives for a cup-stacking game.
Can we get Area Superintendent Darren Joyner to come join us? He's an expert at cup-stacking.
Just, just four of you, so one more pair.
Part, let's do it.
Okay. All right, you're going to raise, committed to win it, competition, but a pyramid stacking, and it'll go four cups on the bottom, three, two, one. First partner will stack them, and then unstack into the pile that you have from you, and then the second partner goes. The winning team gets some Holmes swag. So one at a time. And then you have to disassemble it, and then your partner goes, and the team that wins. Any questions? Four, three, two, one. Ten total, yeah. All right.
On your marks.
Yes.
Get set.
Go.
All right, moving on? There we go, oh, catching up?
Thank you. I think that was kind of unfair, I have some experience in cup-stacking from my Scott Elementary days volunteering out there, so. And looks like Superintendent Gaul is a professional cup-stacker.
All right, give a round of applause, please, to Natalie and Eva. When we were, when we were meeting to talk about what, what Student Council was going to work on, instead of reading the slide to you and going through that, what, what did they most enjoy, and what did kids most enjoy? I love we do this really big awards assembly, and the, the thing that they got out of it is playing games. It's middle school. All right, and then, I would like to recognize also three, three specific students, and on that last slide, you could see there was a lot of celebration to go around, and there's a lot of recognition that, that could have occurred. The method to the madness with these three students, and I'll have Karina, Desiree, and Andrew, please stand up.
So they get to come up here and just give a shout out.
Yep.
In a minute, maybe?
No, this is it.
Okay.
So Karina, Desiree, and Andrew are being recognized specifically because, one, they, on that last slide, you saw the different categories for achievement that we recognized, and all three of them are at very high levels of outstanding achievement. Karina, 3.5 or greater cumulative GPA, regular participation in extracurricular activities is actually the founder of a new club this year called Chalk and Lit, I just love the name of that. And then maintained at or above grade-level expectations on STAR from fall to winter. Desiree, 3.5 or greater cumulative GPA, 95% or higher attendance rate, regular participation in clubs and sports, and maintained at or above grade level on STAR. And then Andrew, 3.5 or greater GPA, regular participation in clubs and sports, had a 65 or greater STAR growth, and maintained at or above grade-level achievement on the STAR assessment. So thank you to you three for outstanding results and efforts for the Holmes community. Very good, okay. And then they're all three a part of Mr. Kileman's class, and, and we're recognizing Mr. Kileman tonight because all four of his math classes had a student growth score of 55 or higher, which, which is incredible. And when we talk about student growth with Superintendent Gaul, we need growth scores like that over the course of two, three years to help close a lot of the, the learning loss from the pandemic, so a little bit of a method to the madness.
Is Mr. Kileman here? Is he here?
He is, he is here. He is, he is here. Do you want to do it?
Well, we'll do questions for you first.
Okay. So then finally rounding it out, where are we headed? The, the first thing is, I spoke to the transformation, I spoke to, we want to continue the momentum. We're only at mid-year. Nothing's, nothing's done yet. We've still got a lot of, uh, way to go and we've got a lot of work to continue. But the momentum is there and we're very excited for the progress that's been made already. So we want to continue those academic, uh, achievement and growth results. We want to continue to support our students in improving behavioral outcomes. And then the other part of where we're headed, we want to make sure that, um, we support the, the board's vision and direction of increasing enrollment by having a better alignment with our feeder schools. So one of those being, uh, outdoor education pathways. This, uh, slide is recognizing, we're just starting to dip our toes into it, but this is a sixth grade, um, survival-based project, kind of Bear Grylls-ish, um, where then students did a project-based learning experience where they were, um, given a latitude and longitude and had to research how to survive in that latitude and longitude anywhere on earth. And this, um, slide is representing some work that another one of our teachers did to do some basic outdoor, uh, survival skill, uh, training. Our other, um, pathway that comes into Holmes, uh, from our feeder school is through Bristol Elementary and is our performing arts pathway. And the work that we're doing already, um, with our full band choir and orchestra classes is already doing a lot of really strong work for our students. For example, we had 22 Holmes Choir students qualify for the D11 Honor Choir, seven of which, uh, qualified for Allstate. And then finally, our, uh, orchestra, we had five Pike's Peak Honor Orchestra students. So we're really proud with that opportunity and supporting, um, families and, and choice coming up from Bristol. And then finally, most of our schools are quality neighborhood school pathways. Again, we want to continue our path of strong academic achievement and growth and, um, continue the intentional work that, that started on that transformational slide. We want to hit and maintain well organized on the five essentials. We're going to continue the work that we're doing with college and, and career and technical edge, education oriented opportunities. And, uh, what I've highlighted here is our wide range of extracurricular involvement, specifically, and we're very, very proud of this as well, um, over 35 different clubs, activities or sports for students to be involved with outside of the classroom.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to turn back the clock 35 years or so and become a Holmes Middle School student. So you guys have a hammock and, uh, who's counting? Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, just real briefly, what, what would you say, uh, is the main spark that really got you guys? It sounds like, you know, we've, we, you survived through COVID, right? And then you had this kind of revelation of, man, we got some work to do. What would you say was really like the game changer, the thing that, that really gave you a lot of the excellent data you showed, your, your clubs, your, your high achievers? I know Brian back from Harrison days, so, you know, you got a good one there. What would you say that, that main reason is?
Well, the, the spark was probably right around September of last school year. We're walking into a situation where things are really, really challenging. Addressing behavioral, the high intensity work that was occurring was really starting to have an impact on the overall classroom experience. Teachers felt it, students felt it, parents felt it, I felt it. And we, we did a lot of hard reflection at that point, but unfortunately, at that stage in the school year, when we're making adjustments, we're catching up. We're not able to be proactive. So a lot of the reflection, um, started right at that time, very early in last school year. And through the, the partnership that we have with our SAC and the support of parents, um, the support that, uh, Dr. Gledich was able to do with helping us secure the two grant-funded positions, all kind of came together to allow this work to really snowball.
Awesome. Good to hear. Thank you.
Director Pankas.
I like, I too would like to come back to school and participate. With all the after-school activities and all, the one that strikes me the most is your, um, exploratory outdoor, uh, program. And so is Outward Bound still available? Is that still a program? Do you know?
I haven't seen an opportunity with Outward Bound, no.
No, because that's what, um, as you showed it to us, uh, that's what it reminds me of. And it would be, it'd be a great segue on into.
That'd be incredible.
It's a wonderful experience, all of them are a wonderful experience. So congratulations to all of you for the fine work you've done. And sir, it's got to be tremendously rewarding to see your students shine like this. So thank you, and thank you to all the SAC and the parents who participated and understand that we want well-rounded, kind kids as well as smart. So thank you.
Director Loma.
I don't want to go back to middle school.
No. We don't blame you.
I got into too much trouble.
Not even Holmes Middle School?
You know, I, I look at education across the country, um, and the other day, I just, yesterday I read there was 10 schools back east, I won't mention the city, I don't want to try to embarrass anyone, but not 1% of their kids were at reading or math level. Imagine a school, and, and, and I say that, um, just so that we understand how blessed we are to have a school like this in our, in our district with parents who care, teachers who care, because you go to some places and, um, they're lost, the pandemic, a lot of, lot of different things. So I just want to give a, a shout out to you guys and to the parent involvement because you make the difference, you make, you really do. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's reflected in your five essential survey where you exceeded 50% this time. That shows strong parental engagement.
Absolutely.
Director Nelson.
I enjoyed my visit a couple of months ago and you, while I was there, mentioned that your staff did a book study together as well. And I took a picture of the book, Fostering Resilient Learners, Strategies for Creating a Trauma-Sensitive Classroom. There was a little bit of a glare there. And I just wanted to say kudos to your staff for their willingness to, to do that extra work outside of their, their, their time, on their own time, I guess, um, to really come together and have guidance in how you guys were going to address some of the issues. So just want to say shout out to your staff that they were willing to do that and that's incredible. And thank you for the hard work that is going on, um, with you and your staff. And thank you to the parents, the SAC. I mean, you guys are amazing and, um, just, it's so encouraging to see everyone come together to help kids succeed. So just thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions. I just want to round up with comments to, uh, I'm so proud of where you guys are headed. First want to give a shout out to Ms. Lauren Walker, who's standing at the back. She was the one that wrote to the board and said, like, you guys have to feature Holmes Middle School. Now this is going to get a deluge of, uh, parents responding that, feature the school, feature the school, but that's a good, uh, that's a good problem to have. In both ELA and math, you exceeded, uh, your project, the target that you set. And hopefully you can set a target for your enrollment for next year and exceed that target too, because before COVID, the pre-pandemic, you were at 650 students. And you certainly have an opportunity to, uh, build up there. And I cannot say enough good things about you guys. In August, um, when we were looking at state testing data, uh, for 2022, Jenkins and North Middle Schools stood out and Holmes, there were some concerns about it. And that was followed, if I remember correctly, by a public comment here by, um, a public citizen who was, um, concerned about some of the behavior practices that were being implemented out there. But as a school, you adapted, you persevered, you overcame obstacles, responded to the challenge. And here you are today as a bright shining light in our district. As an individual, uh, board, board member, and I'm sure I can speak collectively for the board, we are so proud of the transformation and energy at Holmes. And I think, um, uh, it, it is a complete 180 degrees, uh, culture shift. And, uh, student, staff and community have embraced these changes. More importantly, it's having immediate and positive, uh, student outcomes as we see with these three, three students. So kudos to what you guys are doing. Thank you for all your hard work and, uh, now finish strong.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Board of Directors, Dr. Mel Packham. Mr. Gall.
All right, if I get the, uh, three students to come on up and tell us what's so great about your math teacher.
You get the, uh, chair.
My name is Desiree Gray, uh, usually go by Des, but Mr. Kileman, he is amazing. He makes everyone in our class feel welcomed, no matter what their level in math are is. But, um, I just really am appreciative to him for teaching me more things than I could have imagined because he helps make math fun for everyone. And it's just really amazing to be in his class.
My name is Karina Jarboe. I am also in Mr. Kileman's math class. Mr. Kileman just makes everything so much more enjoyable about math. Especially, we have his morning class and it isn't exactly great to do math first thing in the morning. But every morning we have a warm-up and it's full of jokes and fun. And it's just so much more fun than just writing down problems. And we get to do all of these pair shares and talk instead of just sitting there and doing math. So I think that's just really fun.
Hello, my name is Andrew Sandoval and, I mean, what is there not to say about Mr. Kileman? He makes learning fun for everyone. He, like, I agree with Karina, nobody really wants to do math in the morning, but Mr. Kileman, like, makes it fun for everyone. And he's so welcome and I love him as a math teacher. And I don't think I can ask for any other math teacher.
All right, one more big round of applause for Holmes Middle School. Thanks a lot.
So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Great, uh, thank you, President Mel Packham. Thanks, Marsha. Just as we make that transition, especially since he's walking down the center aisle, I can't let Dr. Brandon Comfort walk away without also getting some acknowledgement for the strong work that's happened up at, uh, at Holmes. It takes, you know, it takes a village, it takes a team. The level of support that the area superintendents have been pushing into schools this year is second to none. And I know that, uh, the principal and the team out at Holmes, uh, also see and feel that. But I want to give a personal thanks to, uh, to Principal Carr at Holmes for his belief in, uh, my transition into the district. I know that it was, uh, an interesting time to come in and, and Tony had made some really large statements to his community that said, this is what I need to have happen at Holmes to get the culture right for my building. And I remember we had a couple of concerned parents who were complaining to me. And Tony said, uh, I need you to trust me. And I trusted him and you all are seeing the rewards, not for what Tony's been able to do, but the impact of the students, uh, and the staff that are in the building. So thank you, Tony, for that. There they are, one more time. Uh, and I decided that Karina is a future teacher, uh, because she said parent share like it was nothing. So all the teachers in the room, I think we should unpack that. Maybe we should scaffold it and come up with a scope and sequence and she'll be ready to go tomorrow. Okay, part of my GSDs, uh, get stuff done. Uh, I just want to, we, we came up with a logo, actually, we didn't come up with a logo. Tayon Mesa, a senior at Coronado High School, designed this logo on what she thinks it means to get stuff done here in School District 11, the Colorado Springs School District. And so she took the mountains and she took this idea of strength coming through, kind of flexing your bicep. And if you look real closely in there, you can see a little GSD. So she is now a permanent part of the superintendent's report because we will tag each one of our, uh, photos here with the little GSD logo in the bottom right-hand corner. Uh, and she comes, uh, through our visual arts, uh, work, uh, led, uh, centrally by Laura Lee McDaniel. And so I just really appreciate Laura Lee's efforts in polling the students. There were dozens of these logos that came forward that we were able to vote on together as a team to decide what we thought it really meant to get stuff done here in, in, uh, in District 11. So thank you, uh, Tayon, you are now a permanent part of our work. A second student shout out, um, goes here to Carlos Acosta Villanueva. He took pictures of the Secuententennial event and you can see a few of them in my front office, uh, back behind, uh, where Shawna Kurt sits. He took pictures of the runway events where we had students dressed up in period dress that covered 150 years. And, uh, we were able to highlight that work and bring it into central office. And we actually took a, a couple of the extra ones that we had and we put them in our Chief of Communications Office, Endeavor Ashby's office. So Carlos, uh, obviously likes photography, also from Coronado and also a 12th grader. Uh, so super excited for his work there. I guess, you know, he's so good at photography, he took a perfect photo of himself there as well, so. I got to figure that out. My selfies are terrible. Here's our student advisory board. I don't know how many of you follow our social media links, but we were able to share this. Once a month, we bring in, uh, select, uh, high school students to come in and just kind of talk about the pulse and the environment and the culture of the district and what they need. And so, uh, and what we've really adopted here is we also, where we always have our own students serve students. So the Pro Start team, you can see the boxed lunches all the way around, serve the students there. We talk a lot, we do a lot of listening is what we really do. And most of the topics that we went over this week were, uh, were focused on athletics and extracurricular. And students had a lot of inputs on how we can improve opportunities for them, particularly our students that are at our Watson campus. We as adults think of sometimes our students at Watson campus as having a homeschool. So we will take, uh, think of a child at Bijou or at Tesla as they came from, uh, I'll use Coronado again since we're talking to them. But when I asked the students, I said, how many years have you been at Bijou? And they're a senior and they say, I'm in my fourth year at Bijou. So there is no homeschool for that young woman other than Bijou. And so what the, our students at, at the Watson campus want is they want access to high-quality extracurricular, uh, and sports as well. So we'll be working on that as a team. I'm going to try and get their first names as I, as I go around the table, uh, just because it was kind of fun to have them all there. From Achieve, we had Drew and Kayden. From Bijou, we had Nimue, Brendan, Alexica, Neptune. From Coronado, we had Byron, Trey, Jackson and Savannah. From Odyssey, we had Amber and, uh, Arila. From Palmer, we had Taka. From Tes, from Tesla, we had Jaylissa, Gavin and Ollie. And from Doherty, we had Chance, Chris. And in the little bottom left-hand corner there is Wallet. And so Wallet was doing a B reel, which apparently is some social media post where his alarm goes off and he's supposed to take a picture of what he's doing and post it. And it happened to go off right at the end of the event. And he said, do you mind if I take a picture of the group and post it? And so, uh, it's an, an engaging opportunity for myself and my staff to be able to hear what the needs of our students are. And so we really appreciate them for getting stuff done for us. Many of you have seen a lot of the messaging that comes out from my office, which is really safety, safety, safety. We cannot keep our kids safe enough. You just have to scroll through the news to see the horrors of the world that we live in. And we've talked publicly at the last work session about a challenge that we had last week with a social media post about a threat to school where we had 70% of our kids leave school that day, despite the fact that we had communicated it was not a credible threat. I never fault the family for making the right choice that they feel they need for their family, but we have a crisis in America. But we feel very strongly about the security team that we have in place that helps us mitigate that risk. Uh, we need all our parents and all our community to help us with this. I want to read off some names there. Our central team, who are the ladies and gentlemen not standing near a car, David, Reggie, Brian, Robert, Mona and Lakisha. And then we have 10 different uniformed security patrol officers who support the district 24/7. And they drive around in our vehicles. We have the day shift, Elroy, Chris and Brian. We have the swing shift, Josh, Mike, Cliff and Philip. And then we have the night shift, who happen to be my personal favorites because they get to join the 4:00 AM call when we're determining if it's safe to go to school or not, because they become the eyes and the ears, particularly of where we know our most challenged neighborhoods can be for either snow removal or the challenges that come with just higher accumulation tucked up west into the mountain and, and north towards the Palmer Ridge. And that's David, Mark and Derek. And so, uh, um, you know, we ultimately have that decision, but it's nice to be able to get informed, uh, information from the roads. And when a security officer who drives in the middle of night says, no, 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 it's really slick, you know, that's one of those indicators. Really slick means, uh, that we're probably looking at a delay or a cancel. So for all those people out there who want snow days, find those gentlemen at the night pitch up there. And I'm sure they'll take free cups of coffees and hamburgers to say it's really slick outside. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about branding. And so we talk a lot about the successes of our schools, it's so much fun to celebrate our schools, our students, our staff, our community, but we have to not only tell a different story, we have to sell a different story. We've seen the results and they're consistent as we've seen year after year. We're still losing almost 20% of school-aged students that live within District 11 to either neighboring schools, parochial schools, charter schools. We have lots of strategies for this and we appreciate all the inputs we've gotten from our community, but we just have to sell and tell a different story. So this is the previous logo for Columbia Elementary School. If you were paying attention, Columbia Elementary School was celebrated this evening as an arts integration pathway school for District 11. Here are, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 new logos, I was going to say 6 because 6 is on my mind. 5 new logos for our pathway schools and Columbia's is front and center. Everyone know where Columbia is, it's not far from here. You can see downtown buildings from Columbia. Why not have a logo that says, "This is a central part of the city school." Why not then turn those buildings into pieces of equipment that you use for art? I have simplified what I thought an art school was, which is, I just want to see Mary Poppins and Dick Van Dyke jump into the chalk picture on the sidewalk in front, but these logos will communicate to our community what our schools represent. And again, I'm not the rocket scientist here, but I thought they changed the spelling of Martinez to put the word "art" in the middle of Martinez. It's been there all along, but it takes a graphic designer and a marketing team to be able to pull that out. These just scream out loud what the experience of those schools will be for students, staff, family, and community. As Bristol, and you'll hear Bristol celebrated later this evening in the Accreditation and Distinction Award, how is it that you tell people that you're a STEM school that has Suzuki violin for first, second, and third grade and that your logo is the Bears? Well, maybe that's a pretty good way to do it and turn the legs into gears and hide a violin in the torso of the bear. So the question for us now is, is how many more of our buildings can we get this high-quality logo to start challenging the neighboring districts that say, "District 11 is not what you thought it was, this is District 11. If you go to any one of these schools, you will fall in love with them." How do we get families to go to our schools? I wished it was as simple to just say, "Listen to us from the dais, come to our board meetings," but we're learning the art of selling what we do and this is a first example of that. So thanks to the team that put this together, I'll give shout-outs to Dr. Comfort again and Nicole Ottmer as well as the outside party that helped us with these marketing designs, you'll see more of them. If you have schools that you believe should be on the top of that list, by all means, send me an email. I want to shout out, first, I want to get the shout-out to our comms department for starting our Teacher Tuesdays. And so here we have Laura, who was celebrated yesterday on our social media, and so I'm not going to read everything that's on there, I just know that we might not all be social media fiends, but we are celebrating a teacher every Tuesday for the strong work that they are doing in our schools. Principals are nominating, we do a little write-up, we keep it simple, we just want our community to see the value and how much we appreciate what's happening in our classrooms. The work of the district is not what's happening up here, the work of the districts is what happened in 1,800-plus classrooms every day for 22,000-plus students. So thanks for Teacher Tuesday. I want to, this is a very colorful slide, so I did, we usually like pictures, but I want to be able to announce also in support of the idea of what we're doing for our teachers, our first teacher forums. I've asked my chief academic officer, Tamara Acevedo, Tamara, you want to stand up for everybody knows who you are again? Yeah, there's Tamara. To go to schools and start getting direct feedback from teachers. I don't want to do this over an email, I don't want to have a survey, I don't want principals to filter, I need my lead academic lever to sit down with teachers and say, "Is our strategy working for you? Are the resources something that you can use well in your classrooms? How can we do this different? How can we make this more impactful for you?" The secondary level one, I was just told before I came in here, will be at Swigert Middle School, and we won't get to 50 schools by the end of the year, but we will get to all four regions where we're tipping our toe in elementary, middle, and high schools to get direct feedback from teachers. We do not seek to tell what people what to do, we seek to be active listeners to understand what do our schools and our teachers need to be successful. So we're super excited for that opportunity. Anybody get their blood pressure checked on the way in? Anybody take advantage of that? I did, so these are three of our nurses, this is Bobby, Rachel, and Olivia. This is part of our heart-healthy awareness, we just thought it was important that instead of just telling people to be heart-healthy, "Let's get your blood pressure checked." Mine was a little bit higher than it's ever been before and I still feel like I'm eating healthy and exercising, so, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had the peace flower up here, so it might be the, it's on a Wednesday.
Yeah, I think I'm adding to your stress level.
I'm getting old, that's what it is. So I'm going to take mine again tomorrow, so we'll take care of that. But thanks to them for coming out and for the American Heart Association for continuing to provide us the information to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves as adults. If we're not healthy, there's no way we can be there for our kids, so this is a dual opportunity for all of us. Another shout-out to our HR team, last time we were up here, we talked about our principal hiring. We have moved all our hiring dates up. We are now a month earlier than we were last year for us to be competitive in El Paso County. We can no longer look at ourselves as last in El Paso County. We have the means and I really appreciate the team's work. The real thing that happened here is we got approval for earlier retirement dates was the key for us to be able to get this moving forward. We want people to be able to announce when they retire, but we can't be held hostage to the idea that we can't go out and seek new teachers without knowing where our openings are. We know we have openings, all districts in El Paso County are still short teachers, so advertising early might be the thing that gets us that one more teacher that might have gone to a different district, so we're super excited for that. And now I want to ask Velvet to come forward. What we're doing is the first board meeting every month, we're celebrating two schools for our SSCP work.
Okay, thank you. As part of the work of the D11 FSCP Collaborative, we support schools, but we also want to celebrate the FSCP work being done at our schools. So Dr. Jennifer Schulte, Nancy Marshmello, and myself, Velvet Stapanek, are part of that celebrations committee and we're here to celebrate the D11 schools for February. So I just want to remind you again, like I did last month, this is the definition of family-school-community partnership from the Department of Education. Active partnering is the big piece of it. Just as a space launch relies on a team of people working together to plan and complete a mission, families, schools, and communities work together to launch student success. And once again, I want to remind you of the four essential elements from the FSCP framework. I hope that you'll see those tonight, so I just want to name those off again. Create an inclusive culture, building trusting relationships, design capacity-building opportunities, and dedicating necessary resources. We know every D11 school is working to provide opportunities for everyone to launch student success. And so this month, we want to celebrate two schools, Wilson Elementary School and West Middle School. So before I start, I know there are some people here from Wilson and West, so could you guys stand and? All right, thank you. And we'll go on. Okay, so first, we're going to talk about Wilson Elementary, our first bright spot. Wilson is located in the southeast area of District 11. What's, so let's go ahead and look, hear about their bright spots. First of all, whoops, sorry. The mission for student success is at the forefront of everyone's mind in the Wilson community. Wilson staff is visible in their community through home visits. Before school started, staff took the time to welcome families by doing home visits. They went to two big apartments by the Wilson with gift bags and popsicles for all the students. I love the smiles of the faces of the students as they're getting ready to go back to school. Wilson families and community are provided access to resources. The mobile market from Care &amp; Share comes to Wilson once a month. That Wilson market has the largest number of participants in El Paso County. We want to also, bright spot the second cup of coffee with the principal that happens at Wilson. Wilson's Second Cup of Coffee monthly meeting is regularly attended by 20 to 25 members. Families feel comfortable coming, translators are provided so everyone can participate. They discuss issues that Wilson families want to know more about and the school gets feedback from those families who attend. This year, they've discussed transportation and facilities plans for Wilson families. Adult family education and preschool are coming up on their list of things to discuss. In addition, I don't have a picture of it, but in addition, Wilson has started a separate monthly group to welcome families, a toddler time with 0-3 age children and their grownups. I love that we're getting more of the community into the school early. Okay, Wilson has an amazing staff. Community outreach is led by their community liaison. Lou, I can't, I'm sorry Lou, I can't say your last name. Yes, Hariki. She was spotlighted last month at the District County Ability Committee meeting. She has been a community liaison for 15 years and has worked for D11 for 22 years. She works for Wilson families, providing resources, doing home and hospital visits. And I was, when I was looking at their website, I found she looks forwards to those Second Cup of Coffee meetings so she can interact with families. Principal Atencio actually shared with us at the DAC meeting that students show up at Wilson and specifically ask for Lou because they have heard her name and because of her dedication to this community. I know she has great support from the rest of the staff, but she's doing amazing work there at Wilson. In addition, like many schools, family events are another important component to strengthen relationships at Wilson. Wilson honored community with their Veterans Day Assembly and also they gather together for a STEM Family Night where after dinner, families could choose from a variety of activities including ice cream making, art spool, art spool, car racing, robotics, math estimation, and the book fair. What a fun and educational night to learn about families and build relationships. Thank you, Wilson, for touching all of the essential components for FSCP. Okay, so next, we're going to talk about West Middle School, our second bright spot. West Middle School is located in a historic building on the west side of Colorado Springs and we're going to cover those areas, but first of all, the first one is, in October, West Middle School held a Hispanic Heritage Celebration. The auditorium was filled as everyone watched Ballet Folclorico de Barris perform. The mission of that group is to share the art of traditional Mexican dance with individuals in the community. The colorful costumes and the beautiful dancing was one of the highlights of the evening. I'm going to share some more. As part of their celebration, the West community shared lived experiences by enjoying food and presentations from many of the Spanish-speaking countries. They learned about clothing, food, religions, music, and more. And finally, some more pictures from that event. The celebration of the Hispanic Heritage continued with opportunities to make flags, eat food, and learn about the many countries who have Spanish as their major language. Everyone appreciated learning more about Hispanic heritage. In addition, student success is part of everyone's mission. During the first semester, all West Middle School teachers made at least one positive phone call for every single student in the school. That's just amazing. And they also have, publish a weekly newsletter that goes out from the school to keep families up to date. Finally, they, they have, parents need opportunities to learn about how they can partner with the school. West is offering parent information nights. They recently held a Gifted Magnet Program Information Night. Next month, they're having an information night on helping students with their learning at home. Everyone is working on the same mission at West Middle School to launch student success. And finally, thank you to Wilson Elementary and West Middle Schools for sharing their bright spots for their family-school-community partnerships to launch student success. I hope that each of you can see how a lot of their things embodied those four essentials from family-school-community partnerships. So in addition to this presentation, we're going to go to each of those schools and present them certificates and we'll continue every month to choose two schools to share bright spots. If you know some celebrations that you want to share, then please reach out to us. So finally, I want the Wilson and the West Middle School people to stand up again and let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you Velvet, thank you to our two schools as well at West and Wilson. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Gall, thank you for sharing all that information. I'm inspired by the five logos that you showed for the schools. That jumps out of the page and hopefully that inspires our students to go to those schools if they want to go to an Art Magnet School or an Outdoor Program Schools. Board members, any thoughts or comments? Director Nelson.
Thank you for coming and presenting tonight, Velvet. That was awesome to hear about all that's happening in the district. The board gets invited to a lot of events and we can't attend them all, I wish that I could personally, so that was just a really great review of all that's happening and there is so much good stuff going on in our schools, so good job, everybody!
Yeah, and I'm also excited that we are able to post some of these jobs earlier in the season right now so we can attract the most competent and highly qualified talent as opposed to waiting till May or June to do the hiring process. That sounds like a really positive, it'll have a positive impact for the district. Moving on, public comments. Melissa, do we have public comments?
Thank you. Going over the board protocol quickly, first and foremost, I want to remind the community that board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the board. And as highlighted in the board priorities, the board is very interested in building trust and transparency by listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our work. The clear expectation is that this feedback, which we appreciate, is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to personal attacks and disparaging remarks. So please be respectful of everyone, board members, staff, and audience, and maintain the expected decorum in the boardroom. Each of you have three minutes for your comments, a clock will be displayed on the screen. Please monitor that clock so you can get through your comments in three minutes. And if you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statement made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, you shouldn't have left, Ms. Stapanek, you are the first one back, Ms. Stapanek.
Velvet Stapanek.
All right. School board members, my name is Velvet Stapanek and I come to you with public comments as a Scott community member. I love Scott so much, I still volunteer there even though my children have moved on. And I'm here tonight to ask you to allow the Scott community to name the Learning Commons after Dr. Lawrence Howard for their 25th anniversary celebration. Vera Scott is a unique school in the northeast part of Colorado Springs. We are proud and passionate, just like our namesake, Vera Gang Scott, who was the first black Colorado Springs principal. When Scott Elementary was opened, Vera Scott was still alive. The school had several traditions, the school has several traditions that we still keep to remember this important woman. Her birthday is still celebrated on Jan. 14th of every year. Fourth and fifth graders still have a Senior Prom, a dance where they invite a grandparent or other important older adult. In the early years, seniors from Mrs. Scott's Retirement Center came to that dance. Remembering who they're named after is important to the Scott community. Naming the Learning Center after Dr. Howard is a decision the Scott community takes very seriously. We want future Scott students to know about Dr. Howard just like they know about Vera Scott. Dr. Howard was the building leader at Scott for 10, at least 10 years, longer than any other principal that has been there. His influence and leadership built the strong community, staff, and traditions that are still there. All three of my sons attended Scott Elementary. I still remember the day my oldest son Ezra came home excited about his encounter with the principal, Dr. Howard. Scott used to have an ongoing reading contest with AR, accelerated reading points. The wall by the library was filled with student pictures and the pictures got moved up the wall as the students earned points. Ezra loved to read and his point total was already at the very top of the wall. He had the highest number of points in the school. As a second grader, not having anywhere else to go was very traumatic for him and a great concern. Dr. Howard and Ezra decided together that his picture should be moved to the ceiling. Dr. Howard then helped him put his picture there and Ezra came home that day from school ecstatic that his accomplishments were honored and that Dr. Howard had empowered him. That is just one encounter with Dr. Howard by my family. In the time spent volunteering at Scott, I saw Dr. Howard be the leader our principal should be. He welcomed families and encouraged everyone to be actively involved. He was visible in classrooms and supported teachers. Dr. Howard will always be remembered for his work at Scott and he will still continue to support the school even after he was gone. I've worked on crystal apple books for seven Scott teachers. Dr. Howard was always willing to provide a supportive letter to back their nomination. I know those teachers will cherish the words he support, that he wrote for them. Dr. Howard also came back many times to read or tell stories for Young Authors' Day. Dr. Howard is a man the Scott community respects and loves. Naming the Learning Commons after him is being requested to honor a man who dedicated many years to the Scott community. Students will know who Dr. Howard is, why the Learning Commons are named after- Students will know who Dr. Howard is, why the Learning Commons are named after him, and what he stands for. Students need everyday heroes to look up to. Dr. Howard is a hero for the Scott community. Please let us name the Learning Commons after Dr. Lawrence Howard.
Thank you. No. Thank you. I appreciate the applause, but the protocol is no applause. So you can stand up in support. So thank you for the appreciation. Ms. Carlemore.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Carla Moore, and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Scott Elementary School. I've been at Scott Elementary for 21 years now. I'm also here in support of the initiative to name our Learning Commons after Dr. Larry Howard. He was an administrator that was second to none, for those of you that know him. We also have quite a show of support in the room today with current and former staff, so I think that speaks volumes to who he was. We're celebrating our 25th year anniversary next year, and we couldn't think of a more positive way to commemorate such an amazing part of our past. He knew students by name, as Velvet just attested to. He obviously showed a great appreciation for our Scott community. It was quite emotional when he left. In fact, I'm having flashbacks from the last time that I spoke with the board, and that was 11 years ago, when they said that they were going to move Dr. Howard to Hunt Elementary School. And I spoke and implored with the board not to do so. Unfortunately, he still left, but his name is remembered so fondly at our school. We refer back to the Dr. Howard era. Our test scores were at the very top. We had a waiting list of hundreds of people who wanted to get into our school. Staff members from around the district was like, ask me, what is our magic? Dr. Howard was a huge part of that magic. It was painful when he left. We're so glad that he was able to come back, and he's visited our school a few times. When I put this initiative forward to former Scott staff and current staff, there are 15 of us that have been there through the last 15 to 20 years, so that speaks volumes as well. 100% of people were in support. I hope you saw the stack of letters, not only from Scott staff, but community members and former students with the impact that he has made on all of us. I do understand that you have to do, to vote tonight to pass that, and I implore for you to please do that. We would love to honor him. He was such an important part of our past. We would like to acknowledge him as part of our future. We would like to set up an area in our Learning Commons devoted to him, similar to what we have with Vera Scott, so kids not only understand where they're at, but where we've been. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Another teacher I know, Ms. Susan Strzycz, from Scott Elementary. Let me guess what you're going to talk about.
Good evening. My name is Susan Strzycz. I am the current LTE at Scott Elementary. I have also been a member of our community since our building opened. So I'm really honored to be able to speak about Dr. Howard as well. I can speak as a staff member, but I can also speak as a parent because both of my children attended Scott Elementary from kindergarten through fifth grade and graduated from Dougherty High School as well. And I really believe that part of their success in life was due to the leadership and the amazing teachers that we had at Scott. My Home Away From Home is our library right now because that is where I spend most of my days and sometimes my weekends. It's a beautiful, beautiful space, and I know several of you have had the opportunity to visit our space. And for me, it would be so touching and just such a perfect honor to honor a principal that was so meaningful to our school for so many years. Dr. Howard was a true leader, one that is hard to come by and one that I have not seen in many, many years. He will never be forgotten by the staff at our school. I think the longevity of our staff members through the years is due in part to his leadership because he taught us to work hard, to stand up for what we believe in, and to be really proud of our school. And that's what we've always done. So I am here again in support of naming our Learning Commons after Dr. Howard. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dawn Bolden. And Ms. Bolden is coming with, as a group, so you will have five minutes to talk.
Good evening. I am not Dawn Bolden.
Okay.
My name is Valerie Skates. I'm the Executive Director for Student Success and Wellness, and I have with me this evening Margaret Blumer. She's a counselor at Jenkins Middle School and currently our District Chair for School Counseling. And she also brought someone very famous with her, Tucker, who is our school support dog.
And celebrity.
We also have Tim Garland. He's the school counselor at Russell Middle School and the high school, Colorado School Counselor of the Year. He was at Dougherty previously, so that's why he has that recognition. And we're here to recognize this week as National School Counseling Week. And so they will each be highlighting some of the work of school counselors in District 11. Oh, we have a short video that West Middle School students put together for this week in particular.
Hi, my name is Sarah Clappam, and I'm the School Counselor of the Year for 2023.
We are about to kick off the National School Counseling Week beginning Monday, February 6th and ending February 10th.
This year's theme is helping students dream big.
School counselors play a vital role in helping students recognize and achieve their dreams.
To celebrate National School Counselors Week, CICA will have opportunities to shout out their names as school counselors, you know.
Like Mr. Bailey.
Be on the lookout for links to submit your shout-outs throughout the week.
On behalf of West Middle School.
I hope you have a great National School Counselor Week.
Happy School Counselor Week!
Feliz Dia Nacional de Consejeria Escolar!
Happy Counselor Week!
Gotta love middle school students, right? So, good evening. I am here to just share some comments from different stakeholders that highlight the primary domains that school counselors work within, and that would be college and career, academic, and social-emotional. And so this is what one staff member had to say about our social-emotional support. School counselors are essential to a healthy and productive environment for students. Learning how to process emotions and develop a growth mindset are just two of the benefits I see most often in students who get to work with a counselor. As an educator, I rely on my counselor and social worker to help students missing chunks of the hierarchy of needs so they can access the material I'm presenting. Every school should have a dedicated mental health professional on staff, and I wish there was one in the building for adults. This is what a student had to say about career and college support. My school counselor helps me succeed and dream big by giving me a clear roadmap of high school and the expectations of what colleges are wanting. His personality also brings this light into the room, and I think it lights everyone else up. He is a hard-working counselor that cares about everyone and gives us an easy path to follow. And finally, this is what a student had to say about academic support. My school counselor has an impact in my life because she pushed me to work harder in school and to always show up to school in person because before I was hardly coming and only doing it online. So that impacted my life and career because the job I want, I need a diploma, and she has made me want that. Thank you.
Good evening. It is such an honor to be here and to be a school counselor. I, this is my 20th year as a school counselor and 31st year in District 11 as an educator. I have some notes written down, but I really wanted to speak from the heart. School counselors are doing a lot of things to really touch lives, and as our mission statement says, to empower students, to impact our world. We are doing that, and we're doing that by calling kids by name, getting them known, making them known, seen and heard. You know, we talk about that a lot of time, or should students, should kids be seen or not heard, whatever. We think they should be seen and heard and known by all because they are amazing young men and women from elementary, middle, and high school. And we are doing a lot of things behind the scenes, making phone calls, meeting with parents, meeting with teachers, with administrators, all those type of things. But truly, the heart of the matter is what, when kids feel supported, valued, encouraged, that they have somebody in their corner that trusts them. There's a little poem that I want to read about school counselors, and I think this is true of District 11 counselors. "We are your school counselors. We don't have magic wands, crystal balls, or all the answers, but we do have ears to listen, hearts to care, and time to give. We have ideas and open minds. We are your school counselors. We are here for you." Thank you.
You timed it perfectly. Thank you. Mr. Thomas Murawski.
I'm the Vice President of a Homeowners Association in a neighborhood called 2400 Wood Avenue, just west of Maine Penrose Hospital. And I'm so inspired by this evening. It's been decades since I've been in school. I want to go back. I don't know if I want to go to the classroom, I think I want to come right here. In any case, I bring you another challenge that I know you can participate in overcoming. The city is, threatens to run a four-lane expressway right past some of your schools. Some of your students will be able to spit and hit it. And that's the extension between, the extension of Constitution Avenue from I-25 eastward to Union Boulevard. The, the, this expressway is going to be filled with vehicles, cars, and trucks that belch fumes and noise that will impact Mann Middle School and Stratton Elementary School for sure, and maybe others because this, this expressway, which has exits and entrances only at the beginning and the end, will spill traffic eastward beyond Union Boulevard, past other schools in District 11. Neighborhoods have been setting records, attending two town hall meetings in recent weeks, one at Stratton Elementary, another at Lawson. Well over 400 neighbors have come out in opposition to the expressway. The, on February 28th, the City Council will decide whether to keep the expressway in its feasibility study or remove it. And I'm here to ask for District 11 taking a position on removing that expressway. The, it's, it's, we know as neighbors, we have to make a show of our opposition on February 28th. You're helping us out. Will go a long way to improving the quality of life for students who would have to cross this thing, who are coming and going, and what are they going to do when they want to go out into that track and during recess? Because there may be mitigations to noise, you can put up sound barriers. I don't know about any mitigations for fumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Murawski. Mr. John Gustafson.
I'd like to begin by thanking all the counselors for all their amazing work. And from there, I'd like to say, you know, I love freedom. That's why I love this country, because it's the land of the free and the home of the brave. I'm here to tell you that God wants us to be free. God loves us and wants us to be free, even though it gets messy sometimes, even though it's hard, because it's the wide path that leads to damnation for us and for our children. And I'm not just talking about some fiery pit. Freedom requires a pretty hard road, and that's why, when the chips are down, you need to be brave, because freedom demands nothing less. And that's why we are not afraid to confront the incremental normalization of a de facto surveillance state being imposed upon our children and upon ourselves. We called it out when it came at us as equity, and we cast it out of the temple. It was thrown back into our face in the guise of SEL. Why is it that last year we were cajoled and corralled into fixating on new curriculums when it was the new-fangled implementation of those curriculums that should have been debated in the public square? In the space of a pandemic, was a new modality of mental manipulation forced down the throats of our children and down our throats as well? A new way of subtly and indirectly manipulating the cognitive infrastructure of our children by nudging and shaping the emotional state of little human beings on a subconscious level? And why, in the space of a pandemic, was a cognitive and emotional surveillance state imposed on us in a most undemocratic way? And we'll talk more about that later, but for now, I'd like to bring it back to God and His love of freedom. God doesn't love money. God doesn't love control. He loves us, His children, and He wants us to be free, all of us. So we were bamboozled by CRT inequity in the same way we're being bamboozled by gender affirmation and pornographic content. I'm not saying that those issues aren't important, but they're just symptoms. Symptoms and a means to divert us. And are there people out there who know this and should be saying this? Maybe, but they are not. Are they blinded by something? I don't know. But I do know that God does not love money. He loves us and wants us to be free. And this is why we're against the slow but steady normalization of a surveillance state in our schools. How could we not be against the foisting of facsimile rights upon us and our children? How can we countenance the replacement of their civil rights via the digitization of our sacred institutions? A digitized facsimile version of our institutions is a version we no longer have control over. It controls us. Hidden within the code of SEL is the virus that will corrupt the meta-mainframe of our children's cognitive infrastructure. So may God watch over us all. May God give us courage so we may, so we may be brave, excuse me, because it is the narrow road that leads to salvation. It's the hard road. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the, that's, that's the end of public comments. So thank you for sharing your thoughts and comments. The board appreciates hearing from each of you. Your feedback helps us better do our work. Moving on to the next item on the HEDDA, board member reports. Are there any board member reports? Dr. Daniels, you are up first.
Thank you. I just wanted to say Odyssey had their family night last night, and it was really awesome. They partnered with the African-American Youth Leadership Conference, and they had Dr. Mingo as a guest speaker along with Ms. Intel Bridges, which is the Executive Director with AL, A-A-L, A-Y-L-C-R, let's get that acronym messed up. So wanted to say thank you for putting that on. Just get to see you, Dr. Lansbury. Glad you're here. Also, post-secondary night is coming up again on February 23rd. That's a Thursday at Dougherty. Make sure you all are in attendance so you can hear more about our CTE program and how to get college first year paid for. It's from 6:00 to 8:00. And also March 7th at the Roy J. Watson Campus from 6:00 to 8:00. Also, I wanted to acknowledge a couple of students, or not students, teachers at several schools who are hosting, I don't know if many of you have heard of the EF tours, a couple of educators that are putting on international travel for some of our students. And it's really exciting to see them work as a district to expand our students' horizons with travel and experiences. I believe Mr. Ratcliffe, he's at Russell, and he's taking our students to Paris, Florence, and Rome, I believe. And then we have Ms. Banfield, I think she's taking students to Germany to see the museums there and Holocaust along with, I think it's Ms. X. who's at Dougherty, and she's taking students to Ireland and Scotland and, oh, and Mr. Russell, I know, Mr. Ratliff at Russell is also doing a Washington DC trip for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. So for those of you who have not heard about that, you may be a little late, but you may still be able to participate. Just get the information from those various schools and see how we can support. I know that we've always had trips overseas with our French department, Spanish department, different departments at different schools. So again, lots of effort to build enrollment and to support. So again, lots of effort to build enrollment and to support our students to expand their horizons. And also, there is a Black History Program happening with One Body End that's going to be at the ENT Center for Arts on February 26. It's at 4:00 PM. Please learn more about that so you can participate. I think it's their 10th annual multicultural Black History Program. So yeah, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Daniels. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, I've been making the rounds around schools these past few weeks, so I have three visits that I had that I'd like to share out on. One was, the first one was with Mr. Schultzky at Palmer High School with the Palooza event that was sophomores that had the unique experience to challenge themselves and investigate their own kind of project. And this was with some mentor staff and in their own time. Something that stood out to me was a young man who learned the guitar from having not known anything to learning the guitar and playing one of his dad's favorite songs, to another student who literally taught himself to sew so he could reupholster his seats in his VW Beetle. So pretty cool stuff there. Next, I stopped by Academy ACL with Nikki Myers there and was really awe-inspired by how they've updated that campus that they took over there on the west side over off Chestnut. And really, just seeing how their differentiated instruction in each grade level works with how, I had to ask her a couple of times. I was like, you're telling me that if they're in second grade math but fifth grade language arts, they can move and do all that in different grade levels? And she's like, yeah, we do that, and we track them and we move them. And I'm like, that's amazing, truly differentiated instruction. So that was very impressive. Lastly, I stopped by Rogers last week before our board retreat and was able to check in on how the dual language program was going on there, especially with new building leadership. And it was nice to see that that was still in place and growing and being sustained. So all in all, very good things in my visits these past two weeks. Now, I was a little discouraged to see that D11's academic calendar was not on the agenda for tonight. I'm not sure what that holdup is, but I want to remind folks that school choice, that window closes next week. And, you know, what we're looking at is school choice allows parents and their students who are, excuse me, school choice allows parents and their students, who we sometimes forget are the only reason we exist, to serve, can choose their best schools in our region, regardless of where their home address is. So we want our families to not only stay in D11, but those that have maybe gone away to try something else, to come back to D11. And it's hard to do that when you don't know what our academic calendar looks like. And so I want to thank all of our staff that are doing the hard work and their efforts right now to get our kids caught up and excelling, because you are the ones that are going to attract students back to D11. I've heard some rumors that there's a blockage because of negotiations around the proposed goal that our board has in wanting to add just two professional development days to the calendar next year. I'm unclear of why this would be held up, because our board has a track record of desiring and compensating our staff for any additional time that we ask to be placed on them. Just last year, we added academic time to our elementary schools and paid our staff for it. And as a former teacher, I know the benefit of good PD, and I know what a waste of time poorly planned PD can be for our staff as well. That being said, I fully stand behind and believe in our district's ability to make these PD days effective for all of our staff next year, especially as we work on our goals of investing in staff, increasing our student achievement, and our future vision, as our board priorities say right here behind us. I am worried that we might be losing families who can't access our calendar before the deadline of the choice window closes. And that's where I'm asking, I'll be asking for us later tonight to have a special meeting so we can get that calendar out to our public as soon as possible. So thank you.
Director Bankus.
Thank you. As I visit schools, I want to compliment all of them for making it very clear that kindness is a trait that we want to instill in all of our children. So my latest visit was to Galileo Middle School over on Union, and there was this lovely sign that you can't all read, but I'm going to read it to you. And it hangs on the wall, and this is what kids see every day when they walk down that hallway. Some kids are smarter than you. Some kids are cooler clothes than you. Some kids are better sports than you. It doesn't matter. You have your thing too. Be the kid who can get along. Be the kid who is generous. Be the kid who is happy for other people. Be the kid who does the right thing. Be a nice kid. Be the nice kid. And I think that says it all. When you go to a school and you see in the teachers' classrooms, kindness is a trait that we want to build and we want to share, and we want to grow as our kids grow and develop. Thank you for all of you making sure that we are doing our part to raise kind people so that we can live in a community of kindness. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Loma.
I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago that I was going to be visiting schools over the following two weeks. Unfortunately, I didn't visit one school, but I have a good excuse. My daughter had twins, so I had to fly to California, and I slept till like 11 o'clock today because I'd been up. I mean, two babies is a trip. And I tried to help, you know, and they said, you can stay asleep. You know, how do you sleep? You know what I mean? So anyway, that was my excuse. So I'm back. I got back last night, and I made it here. And so those schools that I said I was going to visit, I will do that in the near future. And then I'm sitting here, and they're all talking about Dr. Howard. And I go, man, that name sounds familiar. Why do I know that name? Well, I was on the board when we voted to move him to Hunt. And now I go, oh, it all comes back to me now. You said, I go, that was me. So I remember Larry. And so, and I know he was getting close to retirement, and we had asked him before you go, we had a need, a pressing need, and we asked him before, you know, would you consider that? And he said, yes. And so, well, you know, we know what he was doing up there at your school. We knew it. This guy was top shelf. So we all decided, yeah, if he'll go, you know, let's send him to Hunt because they need some help. And he decided to do that. And so you brought back a memory on when you said 11 years ago, I'm kind of, okay, wait, 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 I think that was me. And so anyway, but I, yeah, I feel the same way about him. He was a very class act, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. But anyway, that's not up to me. It's up to the will of the board. Amen. But anyway, gabbles.
Thank you. Director Art. Oh, hang on a minute. There you go.
I just wanted to mention, because later when we're talking about calendar, the folks, there might not be some of these folks here. I'm sure some are hoping they won't be. Town hall meeting next Thursday with the superintendent and leadership team. I'm sure some of us board members will be there as we have in the past. February 16th, 6:00 PM, Palmer High School in the Eagle Wing. Thank you.
That was short and sweet. Good for you, Director Nelson. Oh, there you go.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to let the rest of the board and the community know about an opportunity to check out an event at Columbia Elementary this Friday. There's a 12 o'clock and a 1:15 time slot for a Constituting America presentation. And this organization or guest speaker was just recently approved through the D11 vetting process. And it's an exciting opportunity for students to learn about the Constitution and get them excited about our country's history, our relevancy of the Constitution. Presentation instructs about the three branches of government, how to utilize the First Amendment to effect change that students want to see, and much more. It's a 45 to 90-minute presentation for grades 4th through 12th grade. So staff or families, if you think that this would be a good fit for your class, then you can check it out. And there's contests and opportunities for teachers to win $2,000 based on their lesson plans about the Constitution. And just if anyone's curious, it is a nonpartisan organization and just a desire to spread the love of the Constitution to students nationwide. So that's Friday. And then I also wanted to circle back on the conversation we're having about student-based budgeting. We had a presentation last week, and I, as I mentioned, have done quite a bit, I wouldn't say quite a bit, some research, there's always more to be done, on this idea of student-based budgeting. It's been around for quite a while, but I'm going to share some quotes on the research that I found and why I think this is a good idea for District 11. So the following quote is from the National Association of School Boards article published in April of 2019. "A student-based budget is a system where dollars follow students based on need using objective, measurable, and weighted characteristics. Though budgeting is already a complex process, transitioning to a student-based budget is imperative to achieving educational equity." And according to a white paper presented by the Independence Institute in August of 2015, "Student-based budgeting supports the following goals of transparency, equity, and flexibility. Transparency provides a clearer picture of the amount and purposes of funds that travel through a district's central offices to individual schools. Equity in that the funds available per student achieve a rough parity often based on distinguishing characteristics of district, distinct individual student needs. And the flexibility empowering school leaders and communities to make more program decisions with budgeted dollars closer and more accountable to the students served." And then an article in Chalkbeat, this will be my last one, in April of 2022, gives an example that it's also meant to give principals more autonomy. Instead of every school having one assistant principal and one psychologist, for example, a principal can choose to hire one assistant principal, a part-time psychologist, and a part-time dean. So there will be a learning curve for our staff as we take on this new system. And the partnership with all of you will provide the training, coaching, and supports as we slowly, did you hear that slowly, bring this onboard over the next couple of years. We already publish financial information openly and transparently, but this software will help make understanding the numbers easier for staff and in turn allow for more clarity with our SACS and our DAC and any interested parent or community member. And then I'm just going to end with a big shout out and thank you to all of our staff. I play violin in a community orchestra. I started in fourth grade in Audubon. And I was driving home from rehearsal last night, thinking about how cool it is to be a part of something bigger, where there's so much talent in this room. You have the trumpets, the flute, the, all the violins, violas, all these different instruments doing their part, playing their part. And it comes together to make something so beautiful. And I was just driving home feeling so blessed that I could be a part of this organization and have this experience. And it made me think about District 11 and the opportunity I have serving on this board, and how grateful I am to serve with each of you. And I sent an email to Mr. Gall last week after our work session that had been almost five hours long. We'd been in a three-hour meeting the previous day, so almost eight hours of meetings last week, and yet I could not resist sitting down and sending him this just thank you after that meeting. And I'm going to read it. "Even though we just spent hours in a meeting and hours of prep before the meeting on my part, I can only imagine the hours of prep for you and your staff. I feel so energized and excited about the work we are doing. Being a board member can be so very heavy at times. Thank you for helping remind me of why I am doing this. Please tell your staff that their hard work is recognized, valued, and so very appreciated. We are making progress, and it feels good. Even though we wait to see actual outcomes, I still was able to feel a sense of accomplishment tonight with our milestones thus far. We will see results. More kids will be successful in D11. I am filled with so much gratitude and optimism." So I know that he shared that out with some of the staff, but I thought, you know what? I want to hear, I want all of our staff to hear it. So just thank you, everyone, for the hard work that you are doing. We recognize it, and let's just keep going. These kids are going to only just benefit so much from it. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that message with us, Director Nelson. Director Daniels, you want to add something?
Yeah.
Just forgot to say, go out and support our sports team and activities that are happening for the spring. I know the kids are working hard, and I just wanted to encourage everyone to support, if it's track, baseball, whatever, please get out and rah rah for them.
Thank you. I'll finish with my comments, and Ms. Olson, I know, Director Jorgensen, you got a surprise coming, so. So it was the World Read Loud Day. I got to go to visit Chipita. Thank you, Principal Scott, and is it Ms. Chichello? Hopefully, I'm not butchering her name. It was, I was sharing with Superintendent Gall, if board member's job is just going and interacting with our students and reading to them, my job would be a lot less stressful. I had a delightful time in Ms. Wilson's class and Ms. Wilson's first-grade class and Ms. Gaius's fourth-grade class. Great, inquisitive, precocious students who asked me a ton of questions about the board rules and responsibilities. Here, this, Director Nelson, you're going to be jealous of this. I got to talk to them about the budget, you being the treasurer. I got to talk to them about how we get to spend the money, have a part of money. And their feedback was they want more money for extracurricular activities, playground, gym, gym activities, and technology, and snacks, and cafeteria items, all those things. I said, hey, if that comes at the expense of our teacher's salary, they said, teachers will be just fine. So. So that was our first and fourth grade students. And if any of you have a stressful day, take a time to go and visit one of our schools, read in one of our classrooms. You will come out walking out of that room, all your worries blown away, and you smiling ear to ear. So with that, oh, could you pull that up? I think I, so I was also, when I was at Chipita, I stopped at the break room, and I got to talk to two of our sped EAs out there, Ms. Hawa Walker and, let me get her name, Ms. Joyce Martinez. Both of them have been there for, one at five years and one at 20-plus years, and they shared with me their passion for supporting our sped students and our students with disabilities. But they also talked about the real challenge in this day and time about how to balance their passion to serve in the schools while the cost of living is so high and the inflation is affecting how they have to control their personal finances. So for my board colleagues and Superintendent Gall, I know our budget challenges are significant. Having said that, I seriously hope we can competitively compensate some of our para-professionals while building next year's budget. And hopefully, and while visiting Chipita, I also saw these new school bus passes. It is my understanding that these passes will be issued to all our transportation-eligible students in the next couple of weeks, and these student passes will add an extra layer of safety for our students, ensure that our students can, ensure that our parents can keep track of their students on their app, but also collect data that will help us better understand how to program our buses more efficiently. And at this time of driver shortage, it will help us have a better idea of over and underutilized routes. So to our parents, please encourage your students to use these bus passes regularly when they are using our bus transportation. And board colleagues, I put some, I put some cards for you from the Freedom students. They were for the Board Appreciation Week. I was there for the Freedom Cafe a few days back. And the motivation for this cafe was to get staff, parents, and community together in a cafe-type event to discuss the progress of the school's ONE plan. It was led by their principal, Rochelle Williams. She certainly has brought a new level of energy, excitement, and leadership to that building. Staff thoughtfully went over the major improvement strategies, the action steps, how it was implemented in the first semester, things that worked, and areas for improvement. Parent provided suggestions, some very lively discussion. They shared about some of the new practices that they are implementing this year to improve student behavior, including establishing a school-wide social contract for students. So I want to thank Principal Williams and give a huge shout out to her and all the staff at Freedom. I expect that school to soar to new heights. They are the Freedom Falcons. So in the coming months, I expect them to accomplish some great things, both in terms of enrollment and student outcomes. I got to attend the Doherty 8th Grade Open House, similar to the Palmer Open House earlier in the month. There was energy and excitement in the building, lots of opportunities for incoming freshmen to learn about the various programs, including the JROTC program, athletic programs, student clubs, and academic opportunity. Principal Flaniken was there on the stage to answer questions along with their current freshmen. And the three freshmen I have highlighted out there, they were up there on stage, they were eloquent, composed, talked about their personal experiences as freshmen in their first year as Sparta, the opportunities to thrive in Sparta, and the challenges that you can overcome out there. And the funny thing is, I know all three of these students right from their elementary and middle school years. I know some of the SCOT staff in the audience recognized them. I volunteered in their classes and taught math facts to these students. And seeing them come full circle, talking about responsibility, working hard, listening to teachers, listening to their teachers, rising up to challenges and staying out of trouble, I'm proud of each of them. And one of them happens to live in my home and call me dad. That's an ad. That's an added bonus. So at the last meeting, I threw Director Nelson under the bus, digging up her yearbook photo at Palmer. So I said, like, why stop there? I was at Sparta and talked to the yearbook club and was able to dig up a picture of Vice President Jorgensen from his Sparta days. So Director Jorgensen, I have pictures, and that's plural. I shared the most flattering one on screen.
That's my most flattering.
Yeah, but I have picture, but I have pictures. That's all I have to say. And I will end with the community events I attended. I know Mr. Tom Murkawski, hopefully I'm not butchering his name, talked about the Constitution Expressway and the proposed plan to extend Constitution of New all the way to I-25 and how that could impact two of our schools. And these were the two schools that he was talking about, Stratton Elementary and the Wasn Academic Campus. This was led by Councilman Nancy Henjim, Councilman Wayne Williams, and Dave Donaldson were also there. Several comments by community members out there. I got to listen and engage with several of them. This proposed extension, like Tom said, will go right through the heart of D11. So at the very least, we need to keep track of how this is going to impact our students and staff. So that's something that I want to share. And then finally, I want to thank the Pike's Peak United Club for their partnership with the District 11 and the welcome luncheon they hosted for Superintendent Gall. Thanks to Ms. Deborah Hendricks, the Board Chair at Pike's Peak United, and also Melissa Burkard Shields, who sits on the board. She is one of the principals, I think, at Adult and Family Ed in our own schools. And thanks to Cindy Aubrey, the CEO, Edar Steinman, the Chief Operation Officer. They are working with several of our schools, including Mitchell and Adams, and supporting our students and schools. We had several community and civil leaders from Colorado Springs at the luncheon, including Mayor Suthers and his wife. And I will end with you, end with this Superintendent Gall, thank you for sharing your vision and urgency in turning things around in District 11, and your message was well received. And the message that you shared with the leaders in that room, that our primary mission is to serve our students by providing them an excellent rigorous education that will lift every student from where they are and prepare them for college, career, and in community, that they will thrive and exceed their full potential, and that urgency is now. And I will quote the great Martin Luther King, "We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now in the unfolding conundrum of history and life. There is such a thing as being too late. There is no time for apathy and complacency. This is a time for positive action." That urgency has been communicated by the board several times. Going slow got us where we are, losing over 4,000 students in the past four years and the serious budget shortfall and the potential implications. The federal grant money and the five-year enrollment averaging option provided by state has helped cushion the blow, but both are going to end in the next year or two, and the impact is going to be immediate unless we act now with urgency to save jobs, to keep all our schools open, to provide competitive compensation, to avoid deep cuts. Those are the real pressing and immediate challenges that the board and the district is facing. We can bury our head in the sand and ignore it or step up out of our comfort zone. Being in the comfort zone is just that, comfortable, but nothing ever grows in that comfort zone. Step outside it and magic happens. The greatest growth happens outside that comfort zone. More than ever, there is a need to lead District 11 with the same vision and mission that General Palmer and his wife had 150 years back when they started the first school. And that vision is simple. And as it was at the beginning, and we communicated at the beginning of this year, excellence is our destination. We are going to strive for excellence in everything that we do and ensure every single student has the support and resources to try to thrive in the pathway of their choosing. Our students deserve nothing less. Our student, staff, and community are counting on us to step up and lead to excellence, and we owe it to them to do just that. Thank you, Superintendent Gall, for leading us with that urgency and communicating that effectively to that leaders in that room. Thank you. Moving on to consent items. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items designated in the agenda. The consent items are E2, approval of January 25, 2023, regular meeting minutes. E3, approval of personnel recommendations for February 8, 2023. E4, adoption of policy GBGB, staff personnel security and safety. E5, approval of district-wide closure on January 30, 2023 due to inclement weather.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankes.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Moving on to the action item, the first action item, Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item F1?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approve contract C2023-1002 to Schneider Electric Buildings Americas Incorporated for a contract term ending June 30, 2024 and an estimated total contract price of $571,097.80 to perform an investment-grade audit.
Second.
Moved in seconded. This item was originally presented in front of the board at the February 1 work session. Superintendent Gall, do you have new information for our review?
I do not.
Okay, I see some of the Schneider Electric people out here and Travis, right? Yeah, thank you for both being here. Board. Yeah, board colleagues, do you have any comments or quick comments or questions at this point in time? We had this discussion previously. Director Bankes.
I just want to make a comment that after your presentation and the way in which you brought to us and through Mr. Gall, a program where we can upgrade and save money with the district without another outlay and financial responsibility to our tax base. I appreciate the work that you're doing and I look forward to positive results. Thank you so much.
Director Loma.
I was on that Zoom meeting and then I never heard this term when you said the district is energy-rich. And I go, what, energy-rich? You know, and then you begin to explain there's a lot of areas where money is to be had. When I say that be saved, but in the same time, it's your business profitable to you. So I can see the win-win. And so I start, now I start looking at buildings. Is that building-rich? Energy-rich? Because you look at buildings differently. So you opened up a whole new avenue of thought, though I don't have anything else to think about, right? But I appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
This is a very exciting opportunity. Thank you guys for presenting last week. And I just wondered if Ms. Odom, you would mind coming up and giving a really quick spiel on the process that we went through to award this contract to Schneider and the partnership that we have with the Colorado Energy Office, just for the folks that maybe won't go back and watch the work session, but like the 30-second, here's what we did, it's all in the up and up.
Yeah, you're on the clock, 30 seconds. You can make it a minute.
Thank you, Director Nelson. I'll try and keep it to the 30-second limit. In March, we entered into an MOA with the State Energy Office, Colorado Energy Office, for their energy performance program. And we worked in a collaborative manner to put together solicitation. In August, we issued that solicitation. We had five proposals. They were evaluated on capacity, performance, prices set, everybody has the same price. So price was not a factor. Snyder was selected as the top-ranked choice based on capacity, past performance, results, you name it. So we started down the path for an initial contract award, and what we did was we began with a baby scope, you know, like let's look at 10 typical buildings. They went and did their pre-walk with, using a 14-point assessment. And if a building rated nine or higher, then it was deemed to have energy-rich. So we compiled that list and modified the scope of work to include, we went from 10 to 35 sites, which pushed it over the contract limit that required us to bring it to your approval. This contract is only for the audit. At the conclusion of the audit, which is about eight, about nine to 10 months, the district will determine what we want to do with the findings. Maybe we'll implement everything, maybe we'll have a mix. Remember, the whole key is to whatever savings we can realize, we're going to invest that savings in energy performance equipment, hardware, and in upgrades. No timing?
That was, that was excellent. I should have made you do it in 30 seconds. That was perfect. Thank you so much. And thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments at this time. So just to quickly summarize, too, this is going to make District 11 more energy efficient, whether it is, nothing for you, I'm just commenting. So whether it is using efficient LED lighting or state-of-the-art technology to ensure our classrooms are comfortable learning environments, whether it's at the heat of the summer or in the frigid cold days of the winter. And all of us know utility bills have been soaring over the last two, three years, and that's for the residential utility bills. When you consider the impact in District 11 with 50-plus buildings, that kind of adds up pretty quickly. If I remember right, somebody said our utility bills is 6 million per year? Yeah, 6 million per year. And this company is going to perform the audit and hopefully our utility bills is going to be much lower if we implement some of the strategies that you're going to do. And in turn, the money that we would have ended up paying utilities, we can reinvest in our schools, in facility improvements or air conditioning, and make the lives of our students and our staff more comfortable. So with that, seeing no further questions or comments, roll call, please. Melissa.
Director Bankes.
Aye.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Loma.
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The contract award has been awarded. Thank you. And we look forward to the report that comes back. Moving on to the next action item, this is the accreditation of schools with school performance framework rating of 74 or above. I've been looking forward to this discussions and the conversation. We devoted over 20 hours this past four, five months to priority improvement schools and turnaround schools. It's only appropriate, we devote at least 20 minutes and celebrate the schools that are performance and distinction schools. Again, this was presented as a non-action item two weeks back. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
Well, in keeping with this idea of celebrating all things District 11, it is with great honor and distinction that we are able to make this, these presentations tonight of the banner. So I see people coming in. First of all, I want to thank the principals for staying. We're getting near that witching hour where people are going to start to get tired. And particularly, I know a lot of principals brought family members and students as well. We've worked hard to get most of the student-focused items on the front end, but because this is official board business, this has to sit where it sits within the board agenda. So as folks are coming in.
Okay, Superintendent Gall, if I may interrupt you. I didn't ask Vice President Jorgensen to make the motion first. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for item F3?
Sorry, we have to make it official, right? So I move that the Board of Education accredits the school performance framework ratings based on the recommendations submitted by the administration and the District Accountability Committee on accreditation for the following schools: Academy for Advanced and Creative Learning, Odyssey Echo, Bristol Elementary, Chipita Elementary, Halbert Elementary, Scott Elementary, Stratton Elementary, Taylor Elementary, and Trailblazer Elementary, in no particular order.
Moved in seconded. Back to you.
And with that, we'll ask the principals to come forward with their staff and/or family and students in that same order. We will present with them their banner, take a photo, and then move along. But just as we're celebrating, to remind folks that we are winning in District 11. We have just as many schools as this nine, there's about nine or 10, that we're in a stone's throw from reaching this accreditation with distinction and performance level. And I really want to give just a big thanks to the DAC Accreditation Committee for bringing this forward to the board for this acknowledgement and chance to present.
So the first school that's up there is Academy ACL, and their SPF rating was 74.5.
On the count of three. One, two, three, one more. One, two.
And Odyssey Echo's SPF rating was 74.4. Director Daniels.
Wait, did you announce it? Did you announce it?
Oh, yes. I said Bristol Elementary. Maybe I didn't say your SPF rating. The highest in school District 11, 94. And that's... And 25th in the state. Well, you got... I know. And as, as you are, as you are rolling up that principal hammer, happy birthday. Chibita Elementary. And Chibita at 84. We have Halbert Elementary next, at 82. Halbert. Scott Elementary with 83.3. And we have a big Scott contingent up here. Stratton Elementary with 74.5. Taylor Elementary with an SPF rating of 89. It's only one board member. And the last one, Trailblazer Elementary with 78.5. We've got students here. So thank you for all these schools and their staff members for being here. Thank you for your hard work. I also want to mention these list of schools. These are schools that performed exceptionally well, but they missed that 74 SPF. But their performance, I just want to read out Rudy at 72.8, Steele at 72.5, Edison at 69.1, Freedom at 68.6, Jenkins at 66.3, and North at 64.5. Some of these missed out that recognition. I'm sure you will be here in the upcoming years, so shout out for all these schools also. Board members, any comments or thoughts? Okay, yeah, we do need to vote. Okay. So again, thank you for all these schools. A quick thought on my side, over and over again, we talk about the challenges and the pitfalls of the pandemic, the learning loss that happened during the pandemic, especially for our most vulnerable students, and how the achievement gap for minority and economically-challenged students have widened. And those challenges and obstacles are numerous, but we teach our students to overcome obstacles. And these schools showed that resiliency grid. Those are the characteristics we ask of our students, and these schools and staff exhibited that. When there was an obstacle, they saw opportunity. And they did not allow the challenges of the pandemic, the remote and hybrid learning environment, the social distancing and the quarantines hold them down. I'm sure there were days when all the staff were exhausted, and you went the extra mile for our students. So thank you for what you are doing. As a board member and collective board, you have our support and admiration. And I expect all of you to return next year as well. So with that, roll call please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Aye. So that's a double I from me. So with that, the motion passes where these schools have been accredited with performance and distinction. And I hope to see all those banners flying in your school proudly. Outside the school, inside your school. The next item on the action item, relinquishment of Excluding Chartering Authority of Life Success International Academy. Secretary Bankus, can you please make the motion for item F4?
I moved that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2023-02, relinquishment of Excluding Chartering Authority of Life Success International Academy.
Moved and seconded. I think this was briefly discussed at the work session a few weeks back, and we are closing the loop and the conversation. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, I'd like Dr. Scott Mendelsburg to come forward. And just for the board, this is just the follow-on of the previous conversation, and the board's commitment to ensuring that its role as an authorizer is rooted in the viability for both academic achievement and fiscal viability. And so, Dr. Mendelsburg, I'll let you fill in any blanks there.
Afternoon, everybody. Good evening, I guess. Yeah, we've had some long conversations about this. The folks at LSIA are wonderful people. They have some very good ideas. The reality is that of all the, you know, the people that have looked at it from D11's side, we just don't feel like they are prepared to go forward as part of our D11 portfolio.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with their leader last week to discuss the position of the board, or the position of the district in making this recommendation to the board.
Okay. Any thoughts or feedback from the board or comments? This, like, we talked about was discussed, and we've discussed the charter strategy ad nauseam, so to a large extent. And sometimes you hear feedback on how the district and the board are opening the doors for any and every charter. That is not really the case. This discussion and the vote around LSIA charter school is evidence that we are going through this by a thoughtful, rigorous, methodical process. So far, four charters have approached District 11: LSIA, Colorado Military Academy, Independence Hall, and James Irwin Charter Academy. To either they are existing charters or new charters, to open or operate as a District 11 charter within district boundaries. And we are holding any of these charters that apply to the same rigorous standards and expectations of all our current schools. And those standards are that charter's school is operationally and financially sound, academically rigorous, it fills a niche, or provides a unique service, has strong enrollment potential, and has the support backing of the community. If it checks most or all of the boxes, the board has shown a willingness to consider that school. When that hasn't happened, we've provided that feedback. Two of the schools opted to withdraw their application, and now LSIA disagreed with our assessment. With the board vote, we will provide them the opportunity to go to CSI and get approval through them. So... Director Nelson?
I just wanted to share that this is, this is not a fun decision to make. Anyone that has a dream to support kids in getting an education, I mean, that's, that's to be revered. And so, we recognize that this is a very hard process to go through. And I want to thank Dr. Mendelsburg and your team for all the work that you've done in supporting LSIA and their desire to open. And we wish them the best. And, you know, should they go to CSI and they're able to open there, or, you know, if they continue to work through their, work out their kinks and want to come back to us in the future, you know, we, I just want to really establish the fact that we are very pro kids, and getting them a quality education. And if that means parents want to choose a charter school that, and that's going to meet their family's need, then we want to support that as a district and the board here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, rule call please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion passes. So LSIA, we have relinquished exclusive, the district has relinquished exclusive chartering authority. Non-action items. There are two of them here with about the naming of the schools: Jenkins Middle School Gymnasium naming, Scott Elementary Schools Learning Commons naming. Ms. Ashby is here. Would you like to make both those presentations, so then collectively the board can have a discussion? I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
Yeah, I have, Debra, I think that's the best way to do it. Go through both of them, and the board can then have a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, board. I'm Debra Ashby, Chief Communications Officer. And for the past over a decade, I've been the owner of this policy, so to speak. So have had the pleasure of working through several naming opportunities for several of our schools, but have never brought forward entities within schools to the Board of Education. So this is a first for me. But we did convene the Naming Policy Committee twice in the past month or so, for the purposes that were listed before. So per Board Policy FF, which is the naming of district facilities, properties, and assets, the District Naming Committee was convened on January 20th to consider bringing forward a recommendation to the Board of Education for the purpose of naming the gymnasium at Jenkins Middle School in honor of Joel Schertzma, who is a longtime staff member and is retiring at the end of this school year. The D11 Naming Committee, made up of the roles that you do see in Policy FF, reviewed the name that was submitted by Jenkins' science teacher, Gabe Wagner, who is here with us tonight, and supported by Principal Tony Jukowski. Mr. Wagner provided the supporting rationale that has been uploaded to the board docs for the board to review during this consideration. During the naming committee meeting, the following statements were voiced in support of the proposal. Mr. Schertzma is a longtime beloved science teacher, physical education teacher, and basketball coach in the Jenkins community. He's had a positive influence on so many kids who have gone on into science, kinesiology, physical education, and coaching fields. When you think about the coaching community in D11, he's always been committed to the success of students. Also during this naming committee meeting, the following were some concerns voiced in opposition to this proposal. Naming something after a person is always concerning because there are various emotions tied to a person's name, good or bad. D11 has profoundly, is profoundly blessed with coaches, quality coaches, and we would risk hurting others who may feel less than for not being considered. There are other ways to recognize longtime beloved employees, such as an annual award, or a recognition of some sort at the continuation ceremonies that would recognize students for achievements like outstanding athletic and achievement, academic achievements. Another idea that was brought forward was a possible wall of fame. Policy FF was adopted in 1997 and has been through several changes. Previous boards have revised the language in the policy to require that any proposals brought forward for the board's consideration, that a requested person's name, that the individual be deceased for five or more years. The past board revised the policy to remove that requirement altogether. And the current policy as written has been followed for these, both of these proposals. Ultimately, the naming committee voted in favor of the proposal to name the gym in honor of Mr. Schertzma, with seven for the proposal and three against it. For the Scott proposal, again, per board policy, the naming committee was convened on January 23rd to consider bringing forward a recommendation to the Board of Education for the purpose of naming the Learning Commons, or the library, in honor of Dr. Lawrence E. Howard, a former Scott Elementary principal from 2003 to 2013. The D11 Naming Committee, made up of the roles that you see outlined in Policy FF, reviewed the name that was submitted by Scott Elementary teacher Carla Moore, who's also here with us tonight, and supported by Principal Tom Copley, also in the audience. Ms. Moore provided the supporting rationale and letters of support that have been uploaded to the board docs for the board to review during this consideration. During the naming committee meeting, the following statements were voiced in support of the proposal. Scott Elementary is looking forward to celebrating its 25th anniversary next year, and it would be great to honor an individual who encompassed all of the admirable qualities that an effective, compassionate, and dedicated leader should possess. All former staff who were here during the Dr. Howard era and current staff were in 100% favor of this proposal. I believe our school does an excellent job making sure our kids know whom our school is named after, Vera Scott, so I know our kids will know what kind of a leader Dr. Howard is, and we will ensure students know about his contributions to Scott. This naming committee voted unanimously in favor of naming the Scott Media Center in favor of Dr. Lawrence Howard. So those are an overview of the conversations held in both of those naming committees, and it is, according to Policy FF, up to the board to take action and move forward from here. Greg X., our policy director, is also here with us tonight to answer any questions regarding policy.
Thank you. So thoughts or comments or questions from board members? And while you are pressing your buttons up there, I seriously contemplated recusing myself from this conversation, as I know all the Scott and Jenkins staff. I don't know Howard, Dr. Howard personally, he was before my time, and I don't think I've even met him. And Mr. Schertzma, I know him only peripherally, not personally. So I will at least participate in this initial discussion, as we are not voting today.
Director Bankus?
As someone who also worked at Scott, I had my first job there after I retired. It was a lovely experience. And all the comments that we heard tonight were definitely true of his leadership, his compassion, his ability to reach out and bring together a community for the betterment of all the kids, and including the family and kindergarten. Is it something on the, on the, oh, I just lost it. It's kindergarten roundup thing at the beginning. I can't remember. But it was such a warm and welcoming opportunity that really helped set the tone for the climate of the kids going in. My concern, and there's a however, my concern, however, is that when we start naming hallways and libraries, and I agree with the comments that I've heard in opposition, that there are so many folks who have dedicated so much of their time and their effort, their talents, their compassion and their heart to the kids in our community, and specifically in their schools, that I find it challenging, as someone has a vote, to say, yes, we're going to vote with this one, and yet we're leaving out other folks. And so I, it's with a heavy heart. But I am not in favor of naming hallways and gyms and whatever. Big facilities, schools, I think it's really important. I think that honoring Dr. Howard, which I would like to see have happen, take a form that, that doesn't require the board to, to give its blessings, because then we end up with making decisions about who's worthy. And I don't want to do that. I just don't. So thank you for hearing me.
Any other comments at this time? Director Jorgensen?
I will piggyback on what Secretary Banks said. My, I love celebrating folks. And I think my concern is going to be, you know, we have so many staff that have dedicated 20, 30, almost 40 years of service to our buildings, and for concern of Debra and your department, and having your naming committee meet for, you know, a secretary who's been a staple in our front office for 35 years, and she wants the office named after her. Or, you know, just, I mean, our list could, you could, you could have yourself swimming in work with all of our dedicated folks. And so that's my concern of, is there another way for us to honor the attributes and the dedication of service that these folks have done in all of our campuses, whether it's a plaque on the wall, or, you know, a Hall of Fame? There's other ideas, as you mentioned. I, I just, it's, it's almost opening a box of, of unmanageable proportions. And that's, that's a bummer, because these are two excellently qualified people to be, you know, honored. I just have some reservations with it.
Okay. Thank you for both. And before we, I come to you, Director Nelson. Dr. X., maybe you can share what the current policy allows. I think this is something that in our current Policy FF, it allows for naming of areas or spaces within school buildings. And so this could be something that we may have to, at some point in time, maybe the recommendation is coming from the board, that we may have to kick back to the policy committee to look at whether that naming of areas and spaces should be coming in front of the board at all.
Yeah, correct. I think, thank you, President.
I think, thank you President Mopakam, members of the board. I think Ms. Ashby gave a wonderful history of the policy and the changes that have occurred, but in its current state, yes, the, the way it speaks to that naming of a facility, naming of anything inside of a facility would come before the board in this manner.
Okay. So if it is in Board Policy, then it opens the door for these type of applications to come in front of the board. And I fully agree with our, in terms of these two individuals are highly qualified, and we need to recognize them in some capacity, that they made a significant difference from hearing the feedback that we got. They made a significant difference, a positive difference in students' life and staff's lives. It's how we go about doing it, what the process involves. Director Nelson.
I just wanted to say thank you for the staff that are here still and for the heart behind this request and the desire to honor these individuals is, it's just so encouraging and inspiring and to know that we have such amazing staff in our district that years later are still making an impact. And so it is very hard for me to say that I am in agreement with my colleagues, that I think that we should honor these individuals. I would like for us to think about other ways to go about it and that we maintain, you know, Jenkins Middle School and all the facilities within it to be Jenkins Library or Gym, or, I'm just using it as an example, and that we find another way to honor these individuals. So just please know that we see the, the requests and the heart behind it, and I know this is not easy to hear, but I think we can still accomplish the desire, just maybe a different way of going about it. So thank you.
Director Bankus.
Mr. X., I would like to follow up on my colleagues' comments about the policy committee. My view of this is, it does need to come in front of the board, because we ultimately in a local control district are responsible for what happens in our schools. And I would like to see that, that requests such as these come to, come to the board and they're not made at individual sites. I just needed to add my input to anything you take back to the policy committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if I hear you write, Director Bankus, you would prefer these type of requests to come in front of the board?
Correct.
But the board is not going to approve it? Or the board is reluctant to go in that direction?
We don't do it.
Because you don't want to?
And your point.
Okay. Well, why do we have it in policy that they should come in front of the board then?
Because it's for naming schools.
It's not naming the schools, it's naming areas within a school. If it's naming schools, it can come in front of the board. It's naming an area or a library or a gymnasium or a cafeteria inside a school.
We still bear the responsibility in a local control district for what goes on in our schools, and therefore it needs to come to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Director Loma.
We have to remember that we are not a policy-driven school district, we're a board-driven. Policies are there to guide, but whatever the board decides, happens. Now, if you, as a president, or you want to relinquish that to a policy, then that's your, your choice. But any decision in this school district ultimately rests on us, not, not on policy. So if we wanted to, we could do it right now, not even, and I could propose it, we can go to action right now as long as the board agreed to it. What's here, what you're hearing is, I don't know what you, I don't want to say what you're hearing, but, you know, I'm, I think if the teachers want it and it's their school, why not? Why make, why, why make it a disappointment? But again, if you want to hide behind policy, well, that's your choice. But we are the board. We run, we were elected to run this school, not to be run by policy. And so we, I think sometimes you forget that.
Thank you Director Loma. We run it through policy, so that's why we set policies, otherwise.
Still stands.
Okay, thank you. Director Art or Director Daniels, you have any thoughts or comments on this topic? Seeing none, so I sense a reluctance from several of the board members that have commented whether we should be naming areas within a school, and maybe this has got to be kicked back to the policy committee, so we do revise that policy because the current policy allows them to do this. And so if they are going to put in the work and the effort, which is considerable, only to come back to the board and the board is going to say that we are not going to allow it, why put that in policy in the first place? That's my concern out there. Why are they, this allows them the opportunity to put in the time and the effort, and the board is going to use its authority and say, we are not going to approve it in the first place.
It's up to the board.
Director Loma, yes?
That's up to the board.
Yes.
I mean, if you're going to make a policy, then you, you're trying to limit the next board to do what they want to do. Just because this board doesn't want to do it, doesn't mean the next board doesn't want to do it.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I want to do it, they don't want to do it.
Okay. Well, I want to do it too. I, I'm supportive of it. Well, I am supportive of it. I'm just saying, and I, the thing is that it is going to open the doors for every and other school, and like what Director Jurgensen talked about, this is going to cost considerable time and effort and energy for Debra and her team if other schools are all going to jump in and ask gyms and cafeterias to be opened. I am thinking if it is an area or a space within a school, that has to be a local community, school decision, and if the local school and the community at that level has that support, we give that authority to the school, and we don't need to be the one that's judge and jury over this. That's my personal thought on it. Director Jurgensen.
I think a segue between Director Loma and your, your point there, Dr. Mopakam, we could amend the Policy FF to make it a school-level decision. That'd be a happy medium, to take a naming committee off of and have a school take care of it, but then I wonder with, you know, who's going to want to be recognized and how many people are going to want to say, I'm going to claim this hallway, or, not that we're doing it, you know, out of ambition to be recognized, but I wonder where it starts and stops in each building, then that's my concern.
I, I accept, I agree with you on that. Maybe that's where we have some rules and protocols in place, that maybe that school has to have a community meeting, engage the community and get some feedback from the entire community. Did that happen in this case, Ms. Ashby? Was there a public community meeting for?
So the naming committee was convened, but prior to that, they, like in Jenkins' case, they had polled some of the staff members and community members, and in the Scott case, they had asked for letters of recommendation.
Okay. But it was not like a survey that went out to the entire Scott community or Jenkins community?
I believe, I believe with the Scott, because I did get the write-up that they were 100% in favor, that they did ask their staff, their current staff members.
Okay. Director Loma.
I just heard when they were naming schools, I won't tell you where I got the information, but in the past, when they named the schools in this district, the president said, we're going to name this school this, and the board seconded it and they voted, and the school was named. They didn't have a committee, they didn't go and make it more than it had to be, they just did it. Now, if the schools want to name it, I'm going, I want to name the door after you, Parth, that door behind you, we'll call it the Parth Door. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, I think you're making it more. I was in, I was in a meeting, not recently, heard about a meeting, that they are meeting about whether they wanted to wear ties or not. Who cares? You know, I like ties, but everybody doesn't like ties that don't wear one. I'm not Fidel Sosun or anybody like that, tie, you know, so you're getting so deep. If they want it, let them have it. What's the problem?
Okay, is, we've had a healthy discussion on this. Is this something the board wants to, are you comfortable by a show of thumbs up? Do you want to move this to action item next couple of weeks from now, so we can vote on it? And I need four thumbs up out here if we not want to vote on it as an action item. I have three out here, and I don't have enough to move it. So in which case, I'm going to recommend, at least at this point in time, that this, until we figure it out, either through policy, that this goes back to the school level, until we have a protocol in place, let this go back to the school level and this be a school-level decision. If this is not something the board wants to consider in the future, I would recommend that the policy be revised, and that is what I would suggest to Dr. X. But at this point in time, Superintendent Gall, do you have any input on this?
This is a policy decision by the board. We are happy to operationalize whatever decision the board comes to.
Thank you. Thank you for nothing. That's my input at this time. What is that? About what? Oh, okay, Director.
I got one more.
Okay, Director Loma, you are up first.
For those watching, this is, you're seeing why policies were created in the first place, because boards don't want to do their job. So they hide behind it, right? And the policies began 50 years ago, when they started wanting to hide, so they began to create policies so that they can wash their hands and get re-elected. They don't want to make a decision, and you're not, you're seeing how it happens. So this is a good lesson for us all.
Thank you, Director Loma.
I'm just thinking, in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, that this has come to us as non-action. We just gave thumbs of whether to move it onto action so that we could take a formal vote, and by us not moving it onto action, aren't we essentially saying, like, we're not moving this forward?
Yes, we are not moving it forward.
And that people have made their statement? So I, I, maybe I misunderstood what you were just saying, Dr. Mopakam, but I don't think that you can just ask them to kick it back to the school to make the decision, because the policy does currently stand that it has to come to the board. So just for my colleagues, by us not voting to move it to action, we've essentially said, we're not going to take a formal vote on this, we're not even going to address it as a board, that it's, the decision is made, we're not going to approve for the, the schools to name these entities within the school. So.
But we voted.
So we voted. I mean, we didn't vote, but we're saying that they can't do it.
You were right. What I was suggesting was that it go back to the policy committee, the policy gets revised, and it comes back to the board, and if the board approves that revised policy, then it will open the doors that these kind of decisions do not need to be weighed by the board and it kick it back to the local level.
On that point, if we ask the policy committee to make that specific change, I personally wouldn't support it. Like, I don't think that entities within a school should be named. I think that you could have a plaque, you could have a wall of fame, a bench, all the other ideas that were presented previously, there's probably a zillion more, an award, an honor in some way. So I, I would not support changing the policy to say that it should be made at the school level. I would support changing the policy to say that, you know, it's not even really an option to name an entity. And if future boards want to make a change to that, then they can.
Okay.
That's where I stand.
If it is, that's the will of the board, then it certainly can go back to the policy committee, and if they make that revision and they bring it back. As a single board member, Director Nelson, you have clearly expressed where you stand on this topic. So, Director Art.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate your clarity on this topic, and I would say we have strayed from the topic in the agenda, and if we want to address Policy FF, we have future agenda items at the end of the meeting agenda. So let's set that aside, move on and pick it up at the end if we wish.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, what I sense is, I don't have the support of the board to go in this direction. So there were three thumbs up and we didn't have four board members. So at future agenda item, we can bring up a request to go back Policy FF and revise it, and that, that would be my suggestion. I would certainly bring it up, to revise Policy FF. And even then, I sense a reluctance on the board to go in that direction. So, thank you. Thank you for all of you for being here, and I appreciate the time and effort that you guys took to be here. Oh, you are back.
Yeah. Yes, I am.
Policy LC. I think this policy came in front of the board?
It did.
Yes, okay.
Policy LC, research projects, studies, experiments and surveys is being reintroduced with revisions to practice, clarifying language and the division title. These include updating the Educational Data and Support Services Department to Education Insights. There are also new additions to language related to research projects being understandable and written in stakeholder-friendly language, and to research projects being supported by subject matter experts within the district. The policy also includes expanded clarity on parent guardian consent for research projects and surveys, and board processes for permitting opt-out options where applicable.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and the policy committee for your work in, working out the edits that I requested on this policy and just letting the community know that intention there is to just make sure that parents and families are informed of what is going on with our students and when we're doing surveys, that they be notified in advance of the purpose and the content, and in most cases will be asked for permission. There was a paragraph added at the bottom of the policy, just stating that the board may wish to submit surveys to gain feedback from students regarding their experience. So for example, the 5E survey, I didn't, the intention was not to tie our hands so much that a teacher can't ask a student, you know, what their favorite Skittle flavor is, or for the district to get information on how we can improve. So I hope that this policy helps to tighten a little bit to where families know they can trust the district, that's ultimately the goal here, but that we can still accomplish the work that we're trying to get done. So thanks to everyone that was involved in making these edits.
Director Art.
Thank you. I do have a concern about putting this to consent possibly next time. I would love to hold on to this policy for us for just a little bit longer, to hear back from your request at a work, for a work session topic of the Healthy Kids Survey, and I'd be curious, the impact that this would have on it, and I think I know what it is, but I'd like clarity on that, because sometimes I think that the, yes, we let parents know, but the opt-in versus opt-out option, my concern is that we may lose valuable input from our students, which can tell us indeed what's going on with our students on a deeper level. And so we have that, President Mopak mentioned to me earlier, coming up as a board work session topic. So I wonder if my colleagues would entertain holding off so that we can learn a little bit more about that. And likewise, what other surveys might be stunted, I guess, for lack of a better word, have lower participation rates, that could be vital as far as information for our community, our counselors. Thank you.
Dr. Colicky, do you have anything to add to the comment and the concern expressed by Director Art?
Yeah, related to the Colorado Healthy Kids Survey, that would still be an option, but this policy would move that to an active consent model. So if a family wanted to participate, they could, but they would actively opt in, as opposed to like a 5E model, which would be a passive consent where they would.
As long as they have board input.
Correct, yeah. Related to other surveys, certainly it would impact other district-wide surveys, not incorporated in kind of Director Nelson's comments. In some cases, we have those surveys that are just happening within like a particular classroom that would not be necessarily impacted.
Would that necessarily be?
Impacted.
Did that answer your question, Director Art?
No.
Okay. Director Jurgensen.
My, my question comes down to, and this is why I think, you know, a more thorough conversation is, is what impacts.
a more thorough conversation is what impacts statistically, if you will. Or what, if we have an opt-in, what will the rate of participation, what will happen to that? What will the impact be? Will it, you know, will we go from 50% to 20%? We already know that Healthy Kids Colorado Survey last time did not have enough participation. So that was, that's one concern there. I'll have another one after.
Was that the case, the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, we didn't have enough participation last year?
To my memory, that is correct.
Okay. And at that time, it, parents didn't have to opt in or opt out?
They could opt out.
They could opt out?
They could opt out, yeah.
Okay. So it was passive consent?
The last time we did it, it was passive consent, correct.
And the reason for the low student participation was so many of our parents opted out? Okay. Somebody else had a?
Yeah, my mic's off.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, I see your concerns, Director Ott, for sure, in us wanting to know information to be able to serve our students, right? Well, and understanding what they're going on and being able to then wrap around services based on what we're seeing in our surveys. And the flip side of that is that, you know, we have these guidelines in the policy that, you know, that do limit it to things. And so my concern is that it does make it the district's job to say, here's, to really sell the survey that we are saying, we want this Healthy Kids Survey because it gives us XYZ. Here's how we're using the data, here's how we're tracking the data, here's how we're keeping your students' information safe. And if we can't sell that as a district, then we don't deserve getting that information from our kids. And that's just plain and simple. That's private information that that parent might not want their kids to have out there. And we respect that. And if we can't sell it to say, hey, it's good enough for you to take it, and here's why, and here's how we'll use it to serve your student, then I, as a parent, would say, understood. I don't need my kid to take it. And that's the choice that we're giving our parents with this policy. I commend your edits. Thank you.
So I hear you don't have any concerns about moving this traction. Okay. Director Loma.
Participation rate is always important. However, I think at the expense of a parent's right to know what's going to happen with their children, I don't think they're equal. I think we forget, although we serve children, we actually serve the parent. We should be partnering with the parent to help educate their kids. So if we are partnering with the parent, then it would be cheating our partners unfair by not informing them what we want to do with their children. It's just backwards. And any other way is, could be fraught with manipulation if it's in the wrong hands. But you have to give the parent an opportunity to opt in. Because, you know, we all know the difference between opting in, opting out. A lot of those letters get lost in the mail, they don't respond to them. This way, this will force, and this is another avenue, it'll force communication. Because if that is important, then you're going to have to communicate to the parents. And we're always talking about, we need to communicate, we need to communicate. And the schools are the communicators. Most parents are not taught that, to how to communicate like the district is. And if they did, they're probably busy and they have other things that they're trying to survive at times. So it should be at our behest. We need to improve our communication to them that this is what we want to do, this is what we need. Not let them find out that they forgot to check a box. That's kind of underhanded if it's in the wrong hands. I'm not saying it is, but it forces us not to communicate. And then we're saying, well, we need to communicate. Well, here's one opportunity to communicate. And we'll eliminate that by having them to check a box or not check a box. So I think we should just go forward and move on.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. I think we should get the people who created it to the conversation and let them explain it. They can answer the questions, they can tell you why, they can let you know what they're doing instead of us, I don't know, guessing. The people who did it does exist, right?
The people who, the creators of this, Colorado Healthy Kids Survey?
They exist. So they're not like in a chamber somewhere, right? We can actually reach out to the department and say, can you come to a work session and explain this and answer questions and get it all resolved? I mean, straight to the horse's mouth, no making things up, no whatever it is. No imaginary thoughts, just get to the source. And I'm sure they're willing. I'm thinking it's just a phone call and an email, right? I'm not saying you have to answer that.
So, Dr. X. Yeah.
We could settle it. Get them in the room and let them answer the questions.
We hear you, Director Daniels. Dr. X, in the Policy Committee itself, I'm sure all these discussions took place. And was there any input from the Survey Department? Because the Policy Committee is made up of various stakeholders out there.
When it was sent back to us after the first introduction, I brought it back to Policy Committee. Policy Committee reviewed it, made some changes that were talked about during the last introduction of the policy. I then scheduled a meeting with Chief Colicky here to meet with him about the content, about what was kind of the direction coming from the board and from the Policy Committee. We sat down, made the edits, and brought them back to Policy Committee a second time, where they went through the revisions and the process and forwarded it on.
Okay. So the discussions about how this is going to impact surveys, all that happened at the Policy Committee and also with Dr. Colicky. And I'm sure Dr. Colicky then contacted other people in at least our department in our district as far as the impact of the, okay. Thank you. Director Bankus.
I would like to follow up on my fellow directors in that collecting information on our children and what they're thinking and how we can best meet their needs. I would like, in a work session, to have a further conversation than what we're having this evening. And I would like to see the Healthy Kids Survey and the Panorama Survey in comparison. Because when I went to a meeting at a school, a middle school, and I'm hearing the answers to some of the things, or some of the areas that that committee wanted to address, I asked them if this came from the Panorama Survey or the Healthy Kids. And it should come from the Panorama Survey. And my concern is, how many surveys are we going to ask our kids to do? If we're doubling our efforts, I have, I don't feel that we, as a school, district, need to provide the data to the state for the state to make overarching decisions or mandates that they push down to us. I think the Panorama Survey is local. I think it is within our own community. I think the questions are, I haven't seen all of them, I've only seen some of them. And I thought they were appropriate for what we want to accomplish. And that is, how do we keep our kids in school? How do we meet their social, emotional needs? How do we, how do they feel about relationships with their teachers and their classmates? And if they feel safe? Those are the things that we want to know, and I don't want to ask it twice. So I would like to have a comparison of the two.
Which is.
At a work session.
Which is coming as a work session. That request has already been made. I talked to Superintendent Gall about it just a couple of days back, and we have it coming as a work session scheduled. I think it's tentatively scheduled right now for March 1st. I think.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I would like to delay this policy.
Which is, that request that has been made by Director Ott in the first place. And this is what we are talking about? Okay. Director Nelson.
If I may, just to that point, the work session will be fine. But I also want to let you know that in the upcoming DAC accreditation meeting on Monday, Panorama will be presenting the survey and the structure and different findings from it, from previous iterations of it. So just as an open invitation to our virtual DAC accreditation on Monday.
Okay. Director Nelson.
I was just going to circle back on Director Ott's original request. I have actually wondered that same thing. I requested that we review the Panorama Survey, the Healthy Kids Survey, the 5E Survey back in, I think, December, that it be put on a work session. So I know it's coming. So if we want to wait to have a better understanding of what surveys look like in the district before we move this policy forward, then I'm fine with that. And, you know, it may make me realize I don't want that last paragraph I added, to be honest. I mean, it will be good to have more information and understand if we actually should be asking for parents' permission on all surveys. But we will be more informed if we wait, and that's always a good thing. So I will support that request.
Thank you. Director Daniels.
Can we get Panorama and Healthy Kids Survey, those two people in the same room, and have the conversation and answer the questions? I'm willing to go and reach out to the Healthy Kids Survey people. I'm willing to go and say, hey, would you be willing to come to a work session, March 1st? I'm willing to do that.
Is that something, that's the will of the board before we decide? Is that something that you would like to hear from Healthy Kids? I've got your request, Director Daniels, and I'm looking for the will of the board in this. You made one request as a single board member. I'm trying to find out if that is the will of the board. Is there an interest to hear from Colorado Healthy Kids Survey and Panorama Survey, who were, put the survey together? Director Bankus, quickly.
Oh, that's an option. However, I think if we were to have samples of the surveys in front of us, being as close to the kids as we are compared to the folks who compiled the tests for their purposes and data collection, I think that I would like to see a comparison within our own district.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm going to look and see if there is support for Director Daniels's, the request made by Director Daniels about bringing the people who designed the Panorama Survey and Healthy Kids Survey by show of thumbs. Okay. I have three people. I don't have the show of thumbs at this time.
I'm just saying, like, it will help answer all of the questions.
Well, your request was made, and the board said at this time, that was not the will of the board, so.
But we're going to be examining the surveys together. Why not go to the source?
Your option was presented to the board, and the board, so the topic is closed at this time. Moving on. So from what I understand, at this point in time, Director Ott's request was to postpone this, table this until after March 1st. Okay? And March 1st, we are going to have a work session on this topic where we can present the Panorama Survey, the Healthy Kids Survey. Do you have enough information to present the Healthy Kids Survey at this point?
We have direct access to the items.
Okay.
I can consult with Superintendent Gall on follow-up beyond that.
Okay, perfect. Superintendent Gall, you can. Yeah. And five essentials, five essentials is not done yet because it's still in the process. Only the parent part of the five essentials was completed. Okay.
We have those publicly posted on our 5E website.
So you can access that information. And if you want to circle back with a comment or so on the five essential survey itself, what questions are being asked, you certainly can provide that feedback during that work session. So now, is there a thumbs, can I have thumbs for this item to be tabled until March 1st? So it'll come back after the March 1st work session at some point in time? Okay, Director Ott.
That actually might need a motion. So you need a motion before you do thumbs up?
Okay.
Well, unless this is unofficial, and then you go official, which would be fine.
Okay. First, yeah. It's a non-action item. So we don't need to, it's not an action item. We haven't made a motion. We just have to table it. And so if it does, okay. Okay. Which is kind of what we talked about even with our SPF's, when schools, with SPF. Okay, make a motion. And so it would be for the March 8th board meeting, that it comes as action, that this item is tabled till the March 8th. Work session, board meeting. Director Nelson.
I make a motion to table this policy until potentially the March 8th work session, board meeting. I'm not sure if we should move it directly to action at that point because we might want to make edits to the policy. I know, sorry. I don't, I'm going to move it to non-action because we might not be ready to have it in action at that point.
Okay.
So I make a motion to table this policy to non-action on the board, March 8th board meeting.
Moved and seconded. And I will, as a quick comment, this is where I side with Director Loma. This policy has come before the board several times. And it's, again, revised, it's going back. And no wonder we are bogged down in not making any decisions. And it's never going to happen. Okay. With that, take a roll call on that, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
No.
Director Mopakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, it has been, this item has been tabled for the discussion till March 8th. Policy GBEBA.
Policy GBEB and Regulation GBEBR, Staff Dress Accessories and Grooming is being reintroduced for repeal as GBEB and GBEB-R with adoption as Policy GBEBA. The new policy retains language promoting the importance of professional appearance and dress, but removes outdated clothing references. The policy also now includes detailed language specific to FOTC departments, items that were previously detailed in the regulation, GBEB-R. Policy GBEBA continues to provide supporting language for district supervisors and leaders to make dress code decisions.
Okay, I think this policy came in front of the board too. And the board asked, gave some suggestions back to you. It went back to the Policy Committee and it's coming back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Director Loma.
Are we going to ask Susan Roebuck to come in to make sure we use the right clothes?
I think that's a rhetorical question, so I don't think it needs an answer. Okay. Seeing no further comments or questions on it, is the board agreeable to move this to consent? Okay, I see four. So this item moves to consent. Policy GBEB, Staff Contact and Responsibilities. I'll turn it over back to you.
Thank you. Policy GBEB and Regulations GBEB-R-1 and GBEB-R-2 are being introduced for adoption to consolidate staff conduct and responsibilities into one policy and to align the provisions to the appropriate policy section. Currently, elements of the policy and regulation exist across multiple policy sections, and in some cases, may be reiterated here. The policy GBEB outlines those legal responsibilities outlined in accordance with Colorado revised statutes, including but not limited to the protection of confidential information, mandatory reporting, and notification of arrest. Regulations GBEB-R-1 and R-2 outline the professional responsibilities for staff, including boundaries with students, a duty to report, and procedures and definitions for reporting felony arrests in accordance with applicable law.
And this policy is coming in front of the board for the first time?
First time.
Okay. Thank you. This is a new policy discussion from the board? Director Ott.
Thank you. Where is, where are the regulations shared out with employees for this? For Staff Conduct Regulation 1, for example?
Where will they be shared out?
Yes.
They'll be shared out when they are posted inside, when we post them live. This is the first time we have ever had this policy, so these would be brand new.
I guess my concern is prohibited communications in any format, and that includes. and that includes in person by a staff member with a student, includes but is not limited to. And there's many things that absolutely are inappropriate. But I get down to, well, any communications without a legitimate educational reason. That could be, sorry, that's GBER-1, Staff Conduct. It's the second set of bullets, professional boundaries with students. Then once you get past all those first bullets, there's prohibited communications in any format. I just think of teachers, you know, legitimate educational reason, part of just being human is telling jokes when you're a math teacher and making math interesting. The bottom, what's that? Well, I don't know, maybe we're not looking at the same thing. I'm, the first bullet that I see is any communications without a legitimate educational reason.
I see that.
So I just, I hope that that would be, I mean. It is, it does, Director Bankus, it does come down to the interpretation, and I just don't.
Let me recognize you, Director Bankus. Hang on a minute. Let Director Art finish.
I just don't want it to be so specific that, I mean, this is up to you, obviously, Superintendent Gall, and principals, that they are not allowing conversations, like, how was your day? I mean, that goes into partly dealing, again, social emotional learning. We are, we are interacting, we have soft skills, if you will, it's not just academics. The second one, I will note disclosing personal, and then certainly there are sexual, romantic, marital. There are many things there, employment issues or other private matters. Again, I worry that, you know, a personal matter, how did you break your arm? You know, teacher, English teacher person, well, I can't tell you because it's a personal, private matter. It's just, maybe you can address how that doesn't.
I've been trying to allow the board to have policy conversation because that's the role of the board in our relationship. And, you know, I'll just say that my life has taught me that as soon as you make a rule, the exception stands in the doorway. And so we will exhaust ourselves on policy conversations, particularly ones that are at this lowest level. We will never be able to decipher and discern where is the start and stop of a normal relationship-building experience such that there is rapport between teacher and student. We want rapport between teacher and student. We reviewed this particular policy ad nauseam in Executive Cabinet this week and had the same conversation, but found ourselves pivoting back towards the overarching statement of in support of or in conjunction with an educational need. We measure our relationships, the health of our relationships, which was actually the previous conversation, which is how do students feel about their experience in school? So we felt that how did you break your arm would not be the type of item that would be outside of a normal staff conduct expectation. We were trying to group and find a way to avoid some of the things that have put us in the newspaper, of which we don't have policy against, which are, yeah, I'll just let people remember about some of the things that are in the newspaper. So where we start and where we stop, because this came through the policy committee and had been recommended by the policy committee with that specific language, we as an executive cabinet chose to bring it forward to the board and not try and become the editors of the people who are just trying to put their arms around what do we believe to be appropriate levels of conduct. But we had the same concern that it should just be a healthy adult-to-student, teacher-to-student relationship, of which we are confident is happening many times over. And so how thick your policy gets to measure the exception is determined upon Director Loma's comments of, are we driven by policy or are we driven by action?
Thank you.
So, Dr. X, this policy and the regulations, the initial language, did that come from somewhere?
Yeah, we, the original draft came from Casby.
From Casby, so both the original, this and the regulations came from Casby?
Correct.
So most of this language is pulled out of Casby?
And then the edits were made by the policy committee, correct?
Okay, thank you. Director Jorgensen.
Since we're on GBER-1, I would like to add a couple things. In the boundaries with students, I'd like us to add, the starting point here is really great. I would like us to add something along the lines of prohibiting boundaries with students of any type of questioning about pronouns or gender or sexuality, regardless of the age of the student. With the caveat you could add in there if you wanted to, the student may offer their responses on this in their own means and when they feel appropriate to do so, but that wouldn't be a thing that we would ask students of. That's none of our business. And then on the point already discussed, the disclosing personal, sexual, romantic, marital, I would add in there, political. So our students shouldn't have to go into classroom and know whether they're blatantly this or that. It should just be, I'm coming here to learn mathematics from a nonpartisan teacher who's giving me a fair shake and teaching me what I need to learn. In, oh, I know we're working on a whistleblower policy, and so, you know, in the reporting piece of GBER-1, we'll have to add that later, of having a whistleblower policy to the bottom of that, where it talks about, you know, reporting. Because you might be reporting your direct supervisor, which might be, you know, an issue, so that whistleblower policy would be helpful in that instance. That's all for GBER-1. I have a couple other comments on GBEB, if that's okay.
Okay, as far as the regulation, the board itself does not, the board can suggest language. We control the policy, so is that something you want to go into the regulation itself?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Okay. Dr. X, do you have any feedback on what Director Jorgensen suggested? Is that?
It sounded like there was a recommendation to make some edits.
Okay.
So it sounds like it's going back to the policy committee at some point.
Okay. That's the will of the board. So the first one that you suggested was something about the pronouns, adding the pronouns, is that?
I don't see it appropriate for our staff to ask our students, you know, what their gender, pronouns, or sexuality is, regardless of the age. I don't care if it's a senior-level high school class. If that student wants to say, I identify with he/him pronouns, great, that's on them to do that. But for us to go, today, I want to know your names and your pronouns, we should not be doing that. If a student wants to give that, then they can. That's none of our business to be promoting that or, and our younger kids causing confusion with going, what's my pronoun, I'm whatever. So leave it, leave it out of the classroom.
Okay, let's talk about that first. Is there a consensus on the board? Director Art, do you have, I see your button lit up here. Do you have some comments or?
Well, I think that many teachers use that as a way of honoring their students and their students' identities, and basically shutting that down straight up. Not every student's gonna feel comfortable saying, I'm not a she, I'm a he, and, you know. So that's just a concern. I think we can honor inclusivity and certainly at our upper grade levels as children are learning about who they really are, I don't see shutting that down straight up and in policy, much less regulation.
Our cisgender students also might be uncomfortable in having to say, I don't want to know about that with my classmates right now. I want to be here to learn history or math. So to me, it's not an educational purpose. I get the relationship piece, and if that student is wanting to identify their, themselves, then I'm pretty sure classmates and things would already know in the hallways and otherwise, so.
Okay, thank you. Director Loma.
I agree with Vice President Jorgensen. Our role is to educate, educate. Now, if a parent wants to do that home, that's fine. I mean, but when you begin to talk like that, you're actually imposing something into children. And the reasoning globe of a mind of a child doesn't fully develop till they're 25. So you have this child at your whim, and you're going to interrupt by imposing somebody else's ideology, belief, whatever it is, upon a person. Now, you say, you know, I think there's less than 1% who ascribe to that. But they never consider the offense, I'm offended when I hear those terms. And I have to be, I can't say nothing, but I'm offended. I mean, I'm kind of old-fashioned. I know a boy when I see one, and I know a girl when I see one. I don't need it on the document, you know, when you send out a document, you know. So I'm offended, but no one, well, my offense doesn't matter apparently because, you know, we're the, you know, we don't matter, you know, Christians don't matter. So, but that is not the battle in here. That's why I let it go. That is for the parent to decide, and if the parent wants to, more power to you. But it's not our role to impose, just like I don't go to a student state aid. Do you believe in Jesus? No, I don't, because this is not the place for it. You know, I'm, this is a place for math, sciences, English, arts, whatever. That's where, that's where we're at, and if we, because we got so off-target, look at the state of public education across the country. Why? Because we're missing the mark. You're focusing on the wrong things. English, right? Let's focus on English. Let's double up English. Math, but, so these kind of things, like, are all social constructs that people are trying to change. Have no place in any school.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further, do you, can I have by a shovatams, with this pronoun thing, if the recommendation from this board to the policy committee is revise that language to include that teachers don't ask about the pronouns of the students? Okay, I see four thumbs up, so that's the will of the board recommendation at this point in time, okay? And the next one was add political disclosing, was it adding political?
Yeah, to that ballpoint.
And, but disclose, is that disclosing personal, sexual, romantic, marital, political? Okay, adding political to that thing. Do we have a thumbs up on that one? Okay, I see four. Again, okay. So those were the two suggestions in R1, the regulation for that, okay? And then, are there any more comments or suggestions on the policy itself or the other regulations? You said you had something. Okay, Director Jorgensen.
On the GBEB with staff conduct, yeah, I'm reading through this. It's excellent, and I wonder, as a business owner, if I, an employee who came to work and did a wonderful job, they did all my tasks and executed with excellence, and then I heard through the grapevine that they were with friends or colleagues or on social media, defaming my company, calling me an awful boss or, you know, complaining about this or that, it'd be really hard for me to want to keep working with that person, knowing what they're saying outside of work. And the one thing that I'm seeing missing in this policy is something around that while balancing First Amendment rights of saying freedom of expression and speech. But I wonder with the type of culture that we're trying to build and the level that we are trying to bring our excellence back, if we've got staff who are defaming the district, defaming their building admin, their principals, things like that, that's not a person that I want on our team. And so I wonder if we could consider language about something in rules of conduct about demeaning, defaming, or derogatory comments towards the district, their school, or their colleagues, and how that might have some sort of discipline or dismissal consequence to it depending on what it is. I just, I don't want people on our team, I wouldn't want people on my team, on my business, who are talking trash about my company, and then I'm paying them a paycheck every two weeks. That does not make sense in the business world. And I realize it's different in public education, but we have to start thinking like a business because our business is the fact that we are losing customers, we're trying to gain them back, and we need to have policies and things in place that are gonna say, if you're with us, you're on our team, you got beef with somebody, you talked to him about it, but you're not gonna go behind the back and talk trash about our district or our teachers or our building, and then come to work the next morning and get a paycheck. I think that that doesn't seem, that doesn't work out reasonable for the rest of the world. It shouldn't work out reasonable for public ed.
Was that discussed in the policy committee level?
No, conduct that was outside of the scope of what the district can do was not discussed.
Is this contact outside the scope of the district?
If they're, if they're doing something on their own social media account, I would say so, but that would be me just giving my opinion.
It came up in Executive Cabinet, and we defaulted to First Amendment rights since it was outside of work time.
Ask any principal if they'd want somebody like that on their team.
Well, I understand, but we got to follow the, the suggestion would be, in that case, you can contact our legal counsel and see if this is.
We would hope that if there is an employee who is upset, that they would use the multiple channels that the district has to, you know, deal with the complaints and handle it within, before it got to that point.
Well, in a perfect world, that'd be great, but that doesn't happen. We have history of that, that I'd like us to try to address with some policy.
Director Loma.
So that may mean you can make your Facebook public again.
Okay, any further comments or thoughts on this? So what I sense in this is, we need, if we need to talk about this, whether staff can share something on their social media account or anywhere else that is demeaning or derogatory to other employees, staff, or district? Or their students? Okay, can you circle back with legal counsel first and ask if that falls under the? Oh, Phoebe is coming, Chief Bailey. Okay, you've got an answer. You don't need to consult legal counsel. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, President Malpakum, board members, and Mr. Gall. Yes, we have been down this road before, last year, and it is exactly as Mr. Gall said. It is First Amendment rights. We've been rounding around with legal counsel and had them do extensive investigation about employees when they are off the clock, off district property, and they may not be behaving in the manner that we would expect as an employer, but that is their time. Okay, it goes back to, you know, outside the district. They are, you know, individuals, and they have First Amendment rights.
And that includes demeaning or speaking derogatory about the district or the students or the staff, their fellow coworkers? That's okay. That's what I'm hearing from you.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I think it then defaults to the individual review, you know, you get into libel and slander and spaces that way.
Then that moves into a different.
But the idea of a policy, just saying you couldn't voice your opinion.
Correct.
Where your opinion becomes legal or illegal would be an individual investigative item.
You got the answer for that, Director Jorgensen? Okay, so any other discussion on this policy itself right now? So from what I see, the policy itself is a thumbs up. The policy itself, not the regulation, the policy itself is a thumbs up. Okay, so I don't see any questions about the policy. It's the regulation that Director Jorgensen made to request. And this doesn't even need to kick back to the policy committee if the will of the board, which you talked about, that you want to add that language, you can add that language and bring it back within two weeks as an action item. Is that the will of the board, that you don't want to go back to them? Director Art.
Thank you. Just a clarification. So are these regulations our regulations, or are they administrative regulations?
When, in the policy, in our board, board policy for policymaking, when there is a policy that has legal implications, we bring the regulation with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, so.
I would, I would suggest, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna jump right back in. I would suggest that the policy committee be allowed to consider it because they have many voices, they have employee representation, and just thinking, they might have some insight that we are lacking.
So is the board, are you guys okay, is the board okay with what Director Art is suggesting? That it goes back to the policy committee and then comes back to us at that point? point in time? With this new language or their recommendation or whatever it is at that point in time? Okay. But you heard the will of the board. The will of the board is to add those two language in there. Well, do you, do you guys, do I have thumbs to go back to the policy committee, or would you rather make this changes, this is the will of the board, and bring it back as action? So let me ask, do you want to, Director Art's request was to send it back to the policy committee for their input. Okay? Is there thumbs up for wanting to go back to the policy committee? Okay, I see four thumbs up. Okay. So this will go back to the policy committee for their review and recommendation. Okay. With the two language that was added, with the input and the feedback, that that's the will of the board at this point in time? They're just going to provide, exactly, that's, but that's the will of the board at this time. I'm just gauging the will of the board. Okay. Moving on. Future agenda item request. Director Jorgensen.
Well, as mentioned in my board report, I would love for us to have a calendar for our public to view. I'd like us to have a, look at that, having as a special meeting for next week to have something for our public to plan for, for vacations, for staff to plan. That's important. It should be talked about.
You're talking about, you're talking about the school calendar for next year? Okay. And usually that comes in front of the board by January, Feb., in January, and is this something that the calendar committee... Okay. The calendar committee is still looking at it, and is there a reason for the delay or anything? Or is it... Okay. Where are we with that? You want to go, Superintendent?
No, I'm sorry. I was trying to pass a comment. One of my staff members is not feeling well, and I was asking them to please go home and prioritize themselves. I wasn't calling Chief Bailey forward. I believe there was a public comment or a board member's report earlier...
Yes.
That had asked for a special meeting to hold the district accountable to bring a calendar forward. We are prepared to do that.
Okay. Your request was to bring the calendar, and is the calendar ready to come from the calendar committee at this point in time?
The board, the district is prepared to bring a board, a calendar to the board for review in a special meeting next week.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
It's the same work session. We just have other things in the front end.
Yeah, in the front of, front end of it. So the presentation of the calendar, do I have thumbs up to come in a special board meeting next week?
As a non-action?
As a non-action item. It'll come as a non-action item if necessary to go as an action item. So... No, it'll come in a special meeting before the work session. It'll be a quick item that is added on as 10 minutes before the work session. So I see one, that's, I see the four thumbs up. So, so Superintendent Gall, this can come as item right now. Usually it is here in front of the board by this time, and hopefully you can bring it up next week as a special board meeting. Director Nelson, are you done?
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if he had anything, but yeah, we're good.
Director Nelson.
I would just like to ask why there was delay, because I can't imagine it was, I'm just gonna throw it out, that it's, our administrative team has done every, has made every effort to bring the calendar in a timely manner when it was supposed to happen. So could we just really quick state why it is late?
Well, we are in the future agenda item request. Do you have another future agenda item request on this?
No, it was still about the calendar and understanding why we're having to schedule a special meeting.
Okay. Do you...
I would prefer to address that in the special meeting.
Okay.
It's not here this evening.
Okay.
Okay. But just, is it at least fair to say that your team is not the reason that it's late?
I would choose to not pass judgment. There is a struggle in understanding how to appropriately compensate our teachers for the extra PD time, and we are not able to get that reconciled in a timely manner.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further future agenda items at this point in time? Seeing none, calendar review. So this is coming up as a work session next week. It's going to be the graduation profiles, graduation requirements, financial literacy piece, which was something that you requested, Director Jorgensen. Are we ready for the CTE conversation, too, Superintendent Gall?
I thought you and I had talked about trying to shorten the meeting and delaying that for two weeks. So that's at the will of the board.
Okay. So if, you can let me know if your team is ready for it. If you guys are not ready for it, we can postpone it to the March.
The fact that we're gonna have a special meeting on the front end, I will delay that till the next work session.
And then we have the vacancy fund request that Superintendent Gall is bringing that over to the board. And then we have on February 22, a regular board meeting, and then March 1, work session, we tentatively have the survey results that we talked about scheduled, along with, there was something else, I think, there was a request about the health, yeah, health, yeah, health survey, but also about that, it may come up at that work session, the health benefits for our staff at that point in time. Okay. May I have a motion adjourned? Moved and seconded. Melissa Roelkall, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And the initial talk before the board meeting was, the over-under was at 9:30. I think the under one, 9:28. We are adjourned at 9:28 p.m.